My light's on. Do I have a mic now?
Yeah.
Thanks. Good afternoon, and we're going to get started here. We have one council member who just said that they were on their way, and I hope we can wait five more minutes for them. I apologize for any inconvenience, but we'll get started as soon as they show up, or in the next five minutes. Thank you. Is this on? Good evening, everybody. I'm Dave Brown, Mayor of Solvang, and we're going to start tonight's meeting at 6:37? 6:34. I'm dyslexic, too, but 6:34. And roll call, please.
Councilmember Infante.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Claudia Rona.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Elizabeth Arona.
Here.
Mayor Brown.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay. We're going to say the Pledge of Allegiance, and retired veteran Joe Tyson will lead us. So stand if you can, and remove your caps.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. You're a veteran, you disallude. Stand. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Joe, and thank you for your service. Okay, we have some proclamations tonight. Gives me great pleasure to acknowledge all these people in our community. And we're going to start with a retirement. So this is a proclamation in appreciation of Lieutenant Mark Valencia. Whereas Lieutenant Mark Valencia was hired by the Santa Barbara County Sheriff's Office as a patrol deputy on July 3, 1995, and whereas Lieutenant Valencia has served Santa Barbara County with distinction for nearly 30 years, and whereas Lieutenant Valencia has garnered numerous recognitions throughout his career, including a 2020 Lifesaver Award for CPR performed on an overdose patient, in 2029, Santa Barbara Sheriff's Office Deputy of the Quarter, multiple letters of appreciation between 2007 and 2014, and his work in the Santa Barbara Sheriff's Office Special Investigations Bureau. And whereas Lieutenant Valencia was assigned to the City of Solvang as Chief of Police Services on September 18, 2022, and whereas Solvang residents have been served well with him in his role, and whereas Lieutenant Mark Valencia has decided to retire effective March 31, 2025, now therefore be it resolved that I, Mayor David Brown, along with the City Council of the City of Solvang, California, do hereby proclaim April 2025 as Lieutenant Mark Valencia Appreciation Month, and in doing so, we encourage all Solvang residents to wish him happy trails in his well-deserved retirement. Mr. Valencia, Lieutenant Valencia, would you please come up and accept this on our behalf?
Well, thank you. This kind of caught me off guard last minute. Thank you very much. But I just want to say it's been an absolute pleasure serving the City of Solvang. I'm also a resident of the City of Solvang, and I grew up in the San Ynez Valley. So I remember years ago, as a sergeant, as a patrol sergeant, I came across a horrific crash that involved multiple injuries with multiple agencies involved on a pursuit. When I arrived, I asked, "Who's in charge here?" And they looked at me and said, "You are." So then I became a lieutenant, and here I am in Solvang. And it's been an honor to be responsible for my own community. And in serving my own community, I did everything I could. We've all worked together at some point or another, and we haven't always agreed. But the one thing we have agreed on in public service is that our community comes first, and that's our goal. And I'm very proud that I was able to be part of that, and I'm glad to see you continuing that. So thank you very much for this. I truly appreciate it.
Thank you for all your service. Next, I won't call it a citation because we have too much law enforcement here. This is a proclamation from the city on behalf of Child Abuse and Sexual Assault Awareness and Prevention Month. Whereas child abuse and sexual assault are serious community issues that require collective action to prevent and address, and individuals of all racial, cultural, and economic backgrounds can fall victim to sexual violence, which has a profound and lasting impact on survivors in the entire community. And whereas statistics highlight the urgency of prevention, as one in six boys and one in four girls will experience sexual assault before the age of 18, emphasizing the need for education, awareness, and intervention. And whereas in the North County, child welfare services received 4,180 cases for investigation, with 1,272 of those in the Lompoc area, underscoring the prevalence of child abuse and the need for continued efforts to protect children and support survivors. And whereas emotional and physical scars resulting from sexual violence and abuse can have lifelong effects, making it essential for communities to come together to educate, support, and advocate for survivors while challenging harmful attitudes and behaviors. And whereas effective prevention programs succeed through strong partnerships among social services, agencies, schools, youth organizations, faith communities, civic groups, law enforcement, businesses, and residents, demonstrating that prevention is possible when everyone is involved. And whereas increasing education, awareness, and community engagement plays a vital role in preventing child abuse and sexual violence while recognizing the resilience of survivors and the dedication of those working to support them. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Mayor David Brown, along with the City Council of the City of Solvang, California, do hereby proclaim April 2025 as Child Abuse Awareness and Prevention Month. And in doing so, I call upon all citizens, community agencies, faith organizations, medical professionals, and businesses to deepen their commitment to preventing child abuse, dispelling myths about sexual violence, and strengthening the safety and well-being of our community. And to accept this proclamation is Ann McCarthy and Erica Torres. Thank you.
That proclamation is quite a mouthful, isn't it?
Yes. Yeah, it is.
But it's important. Every single word that you spoke is important. Good evening, Mayor Brown and members of the City Council. My name is Ann McCarthy, and I'm the Executive Director of the North County Rape Crisis and Child Protection Center. This is my fifth proclamation this month that I've received, and I'm happy to be ending the month with solving, because I always love coming out here and being in the room with all of you. And as I have listened to each proclamation being read, and again tonight, I find myself thinking, we have a lot to be proud of, and yet there's still so much work to be done. Thank you for honoring the work with these proclamations, or this proclamation, Recognizing Sexual Assault Awareness Month and Child Abuse Prevention Month. I'm truly humbled by your acknowledgement and grateful that the City of Solvang does stand with us in our mission to eradicate all forms of sexual violence and child abuse. Our resolve is strong, but we can't do this work alone. We continue to encourage community members to join us alongside with law enforcement, educators, and advocates in confronting all of these crimes head-on. Sadly, there's enough work to go around, and always more need. There's more than hours in the day than we can ever possibly handle. Sexual violence is pervasive, and it knows no boundaries. But each of us can do something, whether it's learning about services that are available, inviting our staff to speak at your civic group, church, or classroom, or simply carrying hotline cards or cards from People Helping People to share with someone in need. We each have a role to play in educating our community and supporting others. So as we mark the significance of April, let us remember that education is the key to prevention. And I'm quite certain that all of us in this room would rather prevent child abuse or sexual assault from ever occurring than having to intervene in the aftermath of a heinous crime. That's why our outreach and educational programs are so critical. That's why partnerships with schools and law enforcement are essential. Our children deserve the very best we have to give. They deserve to grow up knowing they can live free from abuse. I'll be honest, as a survivor of childhood sexual abuse, I wish I'd had the access to resources when I was a child. While I am not the reason our educational efforts are so important, I will say this. My experience fuels me every day. Every child deserves safety, and when they aren't safe, they deserve to know that help is available. No child and no adult should ever have to suffer in silence. As we continue this fight against sexual violence and child abuse, we need you, the city leaders, to be our ambassadors, to carry the message that education and awareness, they're not optional. They are vital to building a safe and healthy community. Mayor Brown and members of the City Council, thank you for your ongoing commitment to the safety of your city. I know that you don't do this work alone, but your voice and your stance on these issues sends a powerful message to would-be perpetrators, not in our city. So thank you again for this honor, and I want to give Erica a few moments, or as much time as she wants.
I've heard her speak.
This won't be the first time I'm at the mic tonight. Thank you so much for what you do day in and day out, and there's no question that you're led by heart, and that our work in this valley can't be done without the specialty and the partnership. I also want to recognize that those of you in front of me and those of you behind me, literally and figuratively, you know, the City of Solvang helps sponsor and host the annual fulfill-a-wish holiday toy distribution and coats. And so often, when people walk through those doors, they think, wow, this abundance and this generosity. What I see when I walk in, or what I know so many of our clients do and our parents, is they walk in, and rather than abundance, it's relief. The relief of pressure. The pressure that can come with the holidays, when you can't make ends meet, when you don't know where your next meal is, or where you're laying your head. And when I look around this room, and I recognize that the work we do, that's also prevention work, right? When you help a family, when you help somebody in need, when you help somebody stabilize, when the Vikings help provide for a family's medical bills or devices, when you host a collection box, when you are distributing food, when you're delivering meals, when you direct somebody to People Helping People, or our partnership with the local law enforcement. It is true. It can feel like the work is alone, but it isn't. It happens together, and it happens with great care in this community. So thank you.
Thank you very much. We have one more proclamation for the evening. This is Drinking Water Week, May 5 through the 11th, 2025 proclamation. Whereas water is our most valuable natural resource, and drinking water serves a vital role in daily life, serving an essential purpose to health, hydration, and hygiene needs for the quality of life our citizens enjoy. And whereas tap water delivers public health protection, fire protection, support for our economy, and the quality of life we enjoy. And whereas the hard work performed by the entire water sector, designing capital projects, operators, ensuring the safety and quality of drinking water, or a member of pipe crew maintaining the infrastructure that communities rely on to transport high-quality drinking water from its source to consumers' taps. And whereas we are all stewards of the water infrastructure upon which current and future generations depend, and the citizens of our city are called upon to help protect our sources of water from pollution, practice water conservation, and get involved with their water by familiarizing themselves with it. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Mayor David Brown, along with the City Council of the City of Solvang, California, do hereby proclaim May 4 through the 10th, 2025, as Drinking Water Week. And in so doing, so recognize that all water professionals that work for the City of Solvang, congratulations, recognize them. We have Mike Matthews to receive this. Mayor Brown and council members, thank you again for this recognition of all the water operators out there and wastewater. I'd like to include them in this because they are a key to everything that we're doing. And the citizens, I want to thank them. They are constantly involved with calling us, letting us know when they see water leaks, when they see problems, when they have taste and odor issues. They are key to keeping things going, so we can keep that water safe as much as possible and keep the public with water and safety. So again, thank you, though. I appreciate it. Thank you to you and your whole team. Thank you. Next on our agenda is presentations are made, so public communications, non-agenda items. Would you read that for us, please? Presentations, I'm sorry. Proclamations, we did. Presentations, yeah. We have presentation, quarterly marketing effort presentation from TJ A.
Yeah, John Sorkin-Fry. This is our quarterly update. We've got a few slides. Also have representatives from the other agencies that we use. So take it away, John.
Great. Thank you. Good to see you all tonight.
Great. Thank you. Good to see you all tonight, council members, Mayor Brown. Tonight, as Randy said, I'm going to be sharing with you some of the highlights of our last quarter, which took place from January through March. We have a lot of positive results to present to you. But I wanted to start with one really big positive thing that I know the council's all heard about, but maybe some of the public may not have heard yet, but that Solvang was voted the best small town in the West by USA Today, today's Reader Choice Awards. And also another milestone, which was really great, was they were in the top five. Solvang is in the top five of best small town food scene. So this was always something that, you know, we continued to market all the great restaurants and the bakeries and all the people in food service in the town deserve our accolades for that. And the council and the city staff and everyone else involved certainly deserves the best small town in the West award. I will give you the two runner-ups was Astoria, Oregon was in number two position and Heilberg was the third position. And they were the only ones to place in, other than Solvang, in the top 10. So we were number one and number five in two really great categories. And it's very, we're very proud to be working with you in that regard. So I'm sure you've all heard about our recent Brick and Build event, which was very successful, especially since it was the first time out. Want to give my compliments to Candace and Randy for all their hard work. I know Candace, we put a lot of time and effort into this and coordinated all the marketing partners to work all together to promote this event and make it successful. We did a variety of marketing tactics. We did, to build awareness for the event, but also like every message we do in marketing, we're trying to drive them to the lodging page so they book their stay and stay for the entire event. And we were able to do that as well. We did e-blast using the Solvang subscriber list as well as targeted paid social media advertising as one tactic that worked very well. And also what you see before you here is a newsletter sponsorship with Visit California. We've done our own dedicated ones where we own the whole newsletter. This was where we took one section of the newsletter and promoted the event. I'm happy to say we were able to negotiate one added insertion for $3,000, which was no charge. So we were able to get two insertions for the price of one. And next slide, please. We also did a Visit California co-op on behalf of the Central Coast Tourism Council, which is called CCTC. So we shared with them other destinations within this Visit California road trips that they publish. So they have the Big Guide, which is the magazine that's produced annually. This is another publication and we also get a link to that website on Visit California to this particular California road trips. And the distribution of this is over 1 million copies. And what's unique about, nice about this distribution is if anybody's a subscriber to Travel and Leisure or Food and Wine Magazine or Real Simple Magazine, this is polywrapped with those magazines. So you get your magazine and then inside that is the special California road trip. So we know it goes to 600,000 people that are subscribed to those three targeted publications. And then again, on getting back to Brick and Build, we did a series of asset gatherings. We did drones, stills, video of all activities. We shared these out, of course, with the PR partner and also social media. And we produced over 130 assets, which will be helpful for next year. So we'll have all of these assets to show people for the next event. And this will be used again for the PR and social media partners as well. And next slide, please. And you can see some of the, these are just some of the photos that we took, which we also, as I mentioned, did video as well as drone shots as well. Next slide, please. So I wanted just to give you a little insight on some of the website projects that we've been working on. This again is through January through March. So we created a restaurant week's promotion, including a new landing page on the website. We did a space missions in Solvang blog post for Vandenberg Launch Awareness as well. We did a bi-weekly event calendar updates, which we do every month. A new category, which was to archive the pages for our blogs. And a new page and landing page for the Brick and Builds, which generated over 4,500 views to that particular page, which helped us promote the event as people could go and get more information. And the troll promotions and updates, we had over 7,300 views to that landing page as well. Continue to support the fairy tale campaign, including blogs and also banner ads on our website. We worked with, to get to the new blog posts, as well as we worked with Visit San Ynez. They had a special going on with a $100 gift certificate with the booking of a lodging. So we, to take advantage of that, linked it back from their website to our website and took them to our lodging page as well. And we had banner ads on our website to do that. And then we also created a series of Brick and Build maps and PDFs that were used for handouts as well as for educating people about all the great events that were going to take place. And next slide. So website sessions were up over 7% from this time last year, this last quarter. Now just a slight in page views, but the one that really is rewarding for us is that you look at the lodging specials page, we generated over 41,299 referrals. So when I say this, this is people that through our marketing efforts have gone directly to the lodging specials and lodging tourism page. And then they go to the particular properties and then those referrals are then monitored by us. So in that case, we had over 21,000, almost 22,000 referrals that went to the lodging properties. So in other words, people came to our site and then went on to the lodging properties. Now, we can't tell you for sure that they booked because we have no booking engine on our website, but once they're on the property, then we look at a formula that we've shared with the council before. And basically all of these numbers are fairly conservative, so we wanted to get a real picture. So with 21,000, let's just say 22,000 lodging referrals, and they have a look-to-book ratio, which is basically how many of those people that went on the lodging specials page and then went to the particular lodging place of their interest or one or two, did they actually book? And 30% is a very, very conservative number. I know that there are some hotels that have 50, 60%. And then you look at how many reservations that was. That's over 6,500 reservations. And again, this is just January through March. And then if you look at the average daily length of stay, which is normally two days, that equals out to be 13,000 room nights. That's 13,000 room nights. At 225, which is what they call ADR, which is the average daily rate. And we get that from Candace, so we know that that figure is correct. So with this is a possible $3 million in revenue that went to the lodging properties over the course of January through March. And if you want to drill down even further and look at the general fund and the TOT, 12% TOT would have generated over 353, close to $354,000 just in those three months to the general fund through transit occupancy tax. And at this time, what I'd like to do is turn this over to Claudia. Claudia Jensen's our Marketing Communications Manager. She's also going to cover some of the aspects of what we do for you as it relates to social media and basically talking about what Islet does and then what we do and how there's no duplication of services that we have our set of duties through our work scope and they have theirs and we always work together to achieve mutual goals. But I'm going to turn it over to Claudia now.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
If you could go to the next slide, please. Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, perfect. So I will start out on that paid meta ad slide. Can you still see the, there we go. That's perfect. Okay. So basically, as John mentioned, we wanted to highlight a few of the digital marketing efforts that we implemented this quarter and help clarify the difference between the work that we do versus the other marketing entities to avoid any confusion or overlap. So we handle the paid side of social media for Solvang. So we place meta ads that show up on Instagram and Facebook each month. And we worked with Candace to leverage the Placer AI data. So we target demographics that are in drive markets and we can get very granular with the income levels and interests of the visitors that we want to attract. So each one of those ads goes to a lodging specials page, the Solvang lodging specials page. And our meta ads have averaged over 12,500 clicks per month, all directed back to that page. So this quarter's top performing ad was for Brick and Builds and that had an average cost per click of 12 cents. So for reference, that is way below industry average. The industry average is actually 63 cents per click, so well below that. We also handle the monthly e-blast and blog posts, so that helps boost our SEO. And e-blasts are sent to our subscriber list of over 66,500 users. And our average open rate is 48%, well above the industry average, which is 20%. And our top performing e-blast in March was, had an open rate of 52% and highlighted the what's new content. So we continue to see staggering numbers with the open rate on our e-blasts. Next slide, please. We also continue to leverage CrowdRift. So we are able to secure user-generated content from visitors to Solvang and we repurpose those on our social media efforts, our blog posts, our email blasts, and our localhood stories. So those localhood stories can be featured on the Visit California website, Google Discover, and the Solvang website. We embed those there. And our top performing localhood story was on the bakeries of Solvang. We've actually secured over 500 pieces of user-generated content on CrowdRift so far. And we repurpose that in pins on Pinterest and continue to run Pinterest as a secondary channel to Instagram and Facebook to support Islet, but also use Pinterest because so many people go on Pinterest to book trips. So yeah, we put all of the data in our monthly reports as well as on the dashboard. So if you want to look at specific analytics, those are always there. Unless anyone has any questions for me, I'll pass it back to John.
And we know you have a full agenda tonight, so we were brief, but hopefully concise. And again, congratulations on being number one and the best small town and number five in best food scene.
Thank you, John. Much appreciated. Any questions? I just wanted to update your statistics. Our TOT is actually 14%.
Well, it's even better then.
That's why we're the small town.
That's right. You did raise it. I'm sorry about that.
No worries. Okay.
See, I told you I wanted to be conservative, so I even like took a lower TOT.
We have the social media part though, next.
So yeah, we've got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anna from Stiletto and Sue is here from the Visitor Center. If you want to step up, if you have anything to add to the conversation, you want me to share your PowerPoint?
Okay, so I will be very fast as well because I know you have a long meeting. Okay, so my slides are very brief. I'm actually looking here. It's easier for me to see. The first slide just goes over press communications. And again, I've said this in the past, pretty much every time that I stand up here in front of you, that a lot of the writing that I'm doing is being used across all channels. So the social gals will take from that when they need things for posts. And then John and Claudia and Tom, who does the web stuff, and Candace, when she needs it for the website, will take pieces of whatever I'm putting together in usually what looks like a press release, but we kind of pick it apart and use it for everything. And it's all shared in Google Docs so that we can all access it, just like they also then will share photos with us so that I can use those as well. So there's a lot of that. A lot of these things that you'll see on my slides, not only here, but as you get into some of the press clips that I've put on here, just as selects, will show you kind of the overall themes of things that were popping up and where we're being mentioned and talked about in the media. And it's pretty obvious that in the first quarter, we had a lot of troll interest. That was our quote-unquote "big news." And then this just rolls through the year. You see through the year, you know, different quarters and different months, that there are certain things that obviously would be highlighted over others at different times, just depending on what's going on. So the second slide on here, again, this is just some of the higher-level things that I do in liaising with inbound and then also outbound media, outbound media outreach. And again, not only for Solvang as a whole, but I try my best to also plug certain businesses when we have opportunities to do that. So some of it is Solvang as a destination, some of it is specific industries or businesses within town and trying to get media coverage for them. The third slide is also my Visit California crossover there or partnership in submitting content that I submit up to the industry section of the Visit California site. And then they choose to use that as part of their overarching blog posts that they will do for media in the media section of the site. Or sometimes it just sits there and gets listed somewhere else at some point in time. But they basically put out a call every month for specific topics. We don't always have something on behalf of Solvang that fits those topics, but I can also always submit what's new, which is ongoing. So this is a combination of different things that I've submitted over the past couple of months. And then also Central Coast. So that is our sort of drills down from Visit California to the Central Coast. And then we go down to the select DMOs for each of the different destinations. So Central Coast, I also upload content and events to their event calendar. And then these are just my additional items. It kind of mimics what I have every month in working with everybody to do, to help with input and content for the monthly, fairly monthly email blasts that we do. And then working with obviously social, the social media gals, working with Sue to collect term information and chat with her about different trends that she's seeing in the Visitor Center. Earlier in the year, in January, Candace and I met with Cynthia, who's the Director of Sales with Visit San Ynez Valley, and we tried to communicate with Cynthia on various things because we are starting to see not only the media fam tours, but the return of group tours as well that come in. And then I helped Candace, who did most of the work on the Brick and Builds event, which was a massive undertaking in a very short period of time. And then this is just samplings of media clips. Danish Days made the LA Times in January in the 12 California Road Trips Guide that stretches through the year. And it went month by month. So Danish Days was chosen for September. And then we have all of our, the Treeburn, obviously, because this goes back to January. We had Treeburn coverage from the end of Veal Fest, troll coverage, more generic coverage of Solvang as a destination. I am on slide, what am I on? I'm on slide nine now. So again, more troll coverage. And then we see that again, that we're living in the golden age of wine bars. And we had Final Girl that was included in that. That was an Inside Hook piece. And then we got into the beginning of Brick and Builds coverage as that started to roll. And then on slide 10, I have just little blurbs about some of the writers and influencers that we've had, that we had in this past quarter in January, February, and March who visited. Some of them do double duty. They have Instagram feeds or TikTok feeds that also have audiences and followers. So I pasted in here some of the posts that they did while they were in town. And then they also write stories that we reap as a benefit. Slide 11, 805, 805 Living. I submitted a couple of our lady chefs in town. They were looking for more female voices for this particular column that they had in the March Restaurant Issue. And then, of course, we go into the USA Today. So what we tend to do when we are notified of these awards like USA Today or like Newsweek during the holiday season, we will issue a press release first that will go out when we get, when we're allowed to announce the news. They're usually under embargo when they come from the outlets. We will issue something saying that, okay, we were nominated. Everybody go vote. And then if we place, we obviously issue another press release as soon as we're allowed to announce that win with whatever, whatever it is that we place at and which categories. So this is all just as a result. These are great at garnering organic media coverage for us because then each of the other destinations that also issues press releases or announces to their local media, if they include the other runners-up or who won, anything, Solvang will appear in all of that media coverage. So it's really great for us, very minimal spend, so to speak, to then get all of this media coverage just kind of automatically. It's great. So then slide 13, 14, and 15 are all again, just kind of highlights from the quarter of specific media clips on all different topics. And that goes to slide 16. So we had, this is kind of overlap with December, but she technically was here for New Year's, so slides into January. But we had this doggy influencer that we specifically hosted for New Year's Eve. And so this was just some of the results. And I know that Islet will also talk about our influencers and give you more data that they can access on the specific collaborations that we have. But this was our technically first quarter influencer, who was New Year's for that new event that we had this year and doggies. And doggies, since we have so many people that bring their dogs to solving. And then slide seventeen now is um the influencer recaps of people that we had. So we, we combined, we joined forces with Visit Santanis Valley surrounding the Women Wine Makers um and Culinary and Celebration Weekend in early March. And we had one writer and two influencers who were here. And thankfully, we got to host them and they stayed in solving for, most of those, two of them stayed the whole time here. One of them, actually, the other one stayed here the whole time as well. She just switched hotels. So we got, again, double duty. We got these gals who were here that are potentially writers, but also influencers, micro-influencers in the food world in LA. And we had lots of really fantastic coverage from all of them. So that was, that worked out well. Again, surrounding an event that wasn't necessarily in town, but they were here for all of that. And then slide eighteen is um the girl who is actually the writer, who did a story that then got syndicated up to MSN. So MSN picked up her story, her article. And then looking ahead and behind, because again, there's overlap. We had the USA Today Ten Best, which that's already old news. We already got through that. Um, what's happening or what's new in solving and spring into summer events. Some of a copy that I, I still haven't finished with that, that I've been putting together on that. Claudia was able to use in one of our e-blasts, I believe in March. And then this is just kind of a very quick snapshot of our media visits that we had in January and February. We had six writer, journalist, and/or influencer visits. In March, we partnered with Visit Santanis Valley, as I just mentioned, on another three visits that were simultaneous. And then we have three, at that time, it was three. We have more now. Um, three confirmed food and travel writer or influencer, people who were coming in April and May. Um, and now extending into June, we potentially have double that amount that will be here throughout the second quarter of this year. And then.
I am Susan Lee, and I run the Visitor Center. When I do my quarterly uh reports, um, it's kind of like, as you can see, I put the totals for like birthday buttons, anniversary buttons. But then um we've told you before, I put in the questions, some of the questions we get asked um in the Visitor Center, maybe different questions that people wouldn't think of we might be asking. Then I kind of add in usually the typical questions as well. And um, and then I also keep a record in there of, um, if we have time, we ask people where they're from, how they hear about solving, and we have a little form that we fill out. And then um, just so you all know how it works, I usually typically send my report first to Anna. I always call her the glue because she keeps us all connected, and so I appreciate her. So and then she shares all my information with the marketing team, so they're getting the information. Um, and so far, everybody says it's kind of helpful to hear the questions because then they know what people are looking for, kind of helps. Um, and Candace said, kind of helps spur on, okay, ideas for maybe new themes or new things to, to market or think about. So that's what I'm trying to do usually during the quarterlies. And I wanted to say, since uh the USA Today um thing keeps coming up, we have kept a little paper in there, just kind of marking uh when people tell us, since that came out. Um, if they, if they came because of that, they'll just kind of throw that out sometimes. So it, so far, I think I checked today, it was like seventeen, so seventeen groups, not necessarily people, but that have already told us, hey, we came because we heard that you guys were, were number one. So that's always cool. And then I wanted to just, this was just a couple of everything's really quick. Um, I needed to give a shout out to Jonathan and some of the city workers uh because they were awesome. They um actually came as soon as we called one day, um, a few weeks back. A teenager, so you can imagine how upset she was when she dropped her phone into the gutter, went down under the grate, but there was a manhole little ways away. So they came in to us and said, is there any way someone could go down in there and get that? You know, we called them and they came over immediately and they fished that phone out. And the girl was crying because she was so happy. She got her phone. It still worked. So shout out to them. They actually said they fished out keys before from that gutter. There's a grate there that apparently things fallen, but it was awesome. They totally made this family's day, and the family wanted me to, to make sure we passed on thank yous for that. So and then um we had another, we have, we get lots of lost and found stuff in there. We've been getting more. People are starting to hear that we have stuff. So we did also have a tour group and this um lady lost her purse in the restroom. One of the workers locked it away in a cupboard. We called, we got communication going. We eventually got it back to them. And the tour guide was so happy. He actually said, please tell your mayor and your city council, good job. And thank you for having such good people working in solving that are keeping, you know, things going good. They were super happy because this lady was really upset. So it was, it made the bus ride better on the way home, I think. And then um we did have a gal also who came in to see if her coach purse was in the, in the Visitor Center. And we thought she was, really wanted it because it was a coach purse, right? But um she got her purse, took, described it to us. And then um she actually was so excited, she was hugging it. And she reached in and pulled out a little, a little beautiful glass um vial kind of and said, this is my mom, and just started crying and was just so happy to have her stuff back. So um I, I, I wanted to just share this really quick because um I put in my report that we started doing a little quote for the month. And they're just things to help inspire us to help people because that's what we want to do in there. And so the quote for April was, helping one person may not change the world, but it could change the world for one person. And that day was so awesome because we changed the world for that girl with her, with her purse and um her mother's ashes in there. So then just one other thing, this is kind of cool. This just happened um last week. Um, and don't always get to talk, so I wanted to tell you. This is the first time I asked a couple was visiting solving from Brazil. And they came in, they were super cute, was having a lot of fun with them. So I asked them how they found out about solving. First time I've ever been told this, they said ChatGPT told them to come to solving. So that was awesome, right? ChatGPT knows us. So any other questions? Yeah, that was cool.
I want to say thank you and congratulations on all those wins. I think that's, that's amazing. I also want to ask a question that um I don't know because I don't speak this language. But you have a couple of acronyms. Utilizing, utilize new IG narrative text. I don't know what IG means. Instagram, okay. And high performing UGC?
User-generated content.
User-generated, I should know that, right?
So that's essentially um like when we have our photos that we're using, our pro photos that we make. That's our content that we're pushing out there. But user-generated, when it's referred to, it's referred, it's used a lot these days. But for social media specifically, that would mean that somebody posted something, someone out there posted something, and we're taking their content.
Thank you. Please be advised that nomenclature of, of acronyms is not universal. So if, if you could elaborate from time to time, it'd make the reading a lot easier for some of those that aren't a part of that.
And if I may, one quick comment. You kept referring to page fourteen, fifteen, and it's not the pages that we see on our agenda.
She's keeping me on track. That's okay.
This is Kaylee from Islet. I think you guys are looking at our social media report and not.
Right, yeah, we're getting, we're getting there. So I was gonna say, let's not forget Islet. They've got a few things to talk about.
Thanks.
Sorry, uh, go ahead. Are you, any other questions for the ladies here tonight? Or John, anything?
I just want to um appreciate for a moment all the detail that is actually provided to us and all the metrics and the data and even the acronyms. So a couple takeaways from my perspective. Really great to hear um so much feedback, new feedback on the troll, on the Danbo Troll. It's really new, new news for a lot that we're getting that feedback in the Visitor Center and elsewhere, and lots of press. Um, interesting that Instagram is still growing so fast, faster, faster than any other social media platform for us, which is interesting. Um, also great feedback from the Visitor Center because I love hearing what actual visitors are thinking about or asking about. So it, the, the standouts for me was the trolley, where's Rasmusins and is Anderson Soup really gone? So in, interesting how so many people have nostalgia when they come to visit us or re, come every year. And uh the free parking keeps, keeps coming up, right?
Yes, definitely.
Okay, our next.
So yeah, we have Kaylee and Leanna online uh to talk about their uh report. And it's queued up and ready to go if you're, whenever you're ready.
All right, we can start on page four with our key takeaways. So the native Instagram features that we were talking about are using native text, native music. Um, and that's what Instagram's prioritizing right now in the algorithm. Um, we also assisted Anna with influencer collaborations that performed highly. The UGC content that our team curated were top performers and increased our reach and interactions. We continue to optimize Lulu the Troll content from sourced UGC, our marketing teams, and Thomas Danbo himself, which we saw engagement increases from. And then finally, our USA Today voting stories for the three categories that we were nominated in were successful and received over five hundred link clicks. All right, and then our opportunities from Q1. Continued partnerships with influencers that we work with Anna on. New content and videos from our twenty-twenty-five photo shoot our team planned back in March. Um, while we were in town, we were able to get fresh content for social, PR, and web that will be implemented on all of our social channels. And then continuing to utilize carefully sourced UGC by our team based on what styles are performing. And then our three-month check-in, we've added a new column on this slide to include total followers for all of our platforms. We're about to hit eighty thousand on Instagram, seven thousand on Facebook, and five thousand on TikTok. We had over three million impressions on our content in Q1 and over one hundred and thirty-six thousand people engaged with it. All right, sorry, that's showing up black on that screen. I'm not sure why. Um, our numbers on Instagram continue to increase over, year over year. Uh, Facebook was slightly down from the previous year. We see some ebbs and flows um over a few quarters. So this is just general and happens every once in a while. And then TikTok growth and numbers have stayed relatively consistent. And then going into our top performing content, uh Instagram's top performing post was the launch of the Lulu, Lulu the Troll installation. Our team planned and initiated this collab with Thomas's team. And we also cold collabed with the museum. And cold collab is when we add them, but we're not necessarily planning it with them, and they still accept the post. Uh, we curated this post to include mixed media based on our social testing, so it had videos and photos. And then this one for Instagram reels was a UGC sourced video of Alasol. Um, we saw high results with this post, just under three thousand shares in the platform's messages. And then all of our top-liked posts. Um, we're seeing fast-paced video montages and content optimized using the Instagram features that I mentioned, uh, performing highly. We also saw continued excitement with Lulu as the launch of her rolled out. Facebook top performer, this was also sourced UGC by our team. And the goal here was to align with uh seasonal themes for spring. Uh, historically, we know that general content that is noticeably solving performs highly on Facebook and specifically when it shows the windmills. And then our top performing TikTok was another sourced UGC video that included a hook of solving being the Danish capital of America. And that is a hook that we see perform highly time over time. And then love from the community. Here's some great comments from people who have visited, and you can find a few about visiting Lulu as well. And then our Q4 projects outside of our social planning. We help Anna uh monitor and reshare influencer content. We actively updated Yule Fest posts with most up-to-date and event information, gave expert input on the social landscape during the LA fires, communicated with Thomas Danbo's team to secure the collaboration reels, sourced usable content, and visited for our twenty-twenty-five shoot to get new video and photos. And then our market analysis. Um, you'll see that our engagement rate, while it does look like it's going down, it's now evening out to align with the others in our market. The high point that you're seeing in September was about four videos that individually had each just under one million views, so they were very high performers. Um, this was seasonal content and influencer collaborations. So we're just seeing everything even out now. Our engagement rate is also evening out with the others based on the same analysis. Um, we're continuing to now see a rate that aligns with most of the other accounts in our market. And the tourism industry's average engagement rate is point four, and we're at one point ten percent. So we are well above. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? All right. Thank you very much. Very informative and appreciate your quarterly report. We uh, I don't know how to tell you to make it better, uh, but I'm sure you will.
Thank you.
And I, I really love those frequently asked questions that uh people come up with, like Councilmember Ronu said. Okay, we're going to move on then to uh public communications, non-agenda items. Would you read that, please, Madam Clerk?
At this time, you may address the council on items not on the agenda and on consent. Time limit is three minutes, and we will start with in-person public comments first.
I don't have any slips for general comment. If there is anybody that wanted to make a general comment, if not, we'll go to Zoom. Is there anybody there? Okay, we'll close that part of our meeting. And we'll move on to um City Manager's Report and Advanced Calendar.
So I'll be brief because I can't hear. I was in an ACDC concert over the weekend. Um, so and then in order to help save a little time, I'll save any comments for the next meeting.
Any, any questions? That was, that, that was brief. ACDC, that's another acronym, right?
For those about to rock, we salute you.
Well, I'm glad you had fun. Um, okay, we'll move on to item five. If there's no questions for the City Manager. Uh, public comment or? We, we just passed public comment. Do you want, you're, I have you down for number item eight. Okay, V, be all right. Okay, um, section five, would you, or item five, would you read that, please?
Government Code, Section Five Three Two, Three Two Point Three D, AKA AB twelve thirty-four, and G C, Section Eighty-four Three Zero Eight, AKA SB fourteen thirty-nine. Report out, Ex parte communications and council comments and requests.
Okay, any comments by our members, Mr. Alfante?
Two items. Uh, I went to the Groundwater Sustainability Agency EMA meeting on the seventeenth to listen, being the alternate, I wanted to be aware of what was going on. And then on the twenty-fourth, I was at the Chamber of Commerce Mixer at the Theater Fest, which was well-attended and quite well-done. Thank you.
Ms. Smith?
Um, very briefly, um, I also attended the Solvang Chamber Mixer, but, but I was only there for about ten minutes, had a great slider, but I had another obligation, so I, I did have to leave. Um, but I, I do want to mention um that uh someone who is a friend of mine, Jody Williams, reached out to me um today uh via text. Um, she is involved with the Solvang School Education Foundation, and they do have a grant application in. Um, and she basically just wanted to tell me that she was, that she, nor any other person from that foundation were able to attend the meeting tonight to. the meeting tonight to, to make any comments or speak. So I just wanted to disclose that.
That'll be an item six. Oh, okay. Right. But that's the next, that's after item five. We're set. Thank you. Any other comments?
I do need to report out a couple of meetings that I attended, which was last week. I attended the first workshop on our ad hoc committee for the budget review. So we're working to shape up all the numbers and work with the staff to get that in, in position for our review. And then I also attended the EMA JPA meeting, which was, two, two important things came out of that, which was our established, our go-forward, at least preliminary and initial budget for the JPA. And it does have a request, the formal request for, within that startup budget, additional funding and loan from the City of solving. And we confirmed we had already budgeted for that, and it is in the 2025, 26 budget. And then, most importantly, that we, in establishing that initial startup budget for the JPA, we have reverse-solved for our initial water and metering rate values, and they will be presented and shared with the public in June. So many people have received the, a notice in the mail for that public hearing, so I just wanted to make sure that the public of solving is also aware. That's coming.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to report out that I met with the, the sponsors of the Knife show that they had here, and got some really good feedback, wanted to make sure that they knew they, they were welcomed in solving, and I hope they bring back their show each and every year, and they seemed to think that they would. We also, thank you to Olivia at City. We had a great group photo of, it looked like Dodger blue or something that we had to, if Ms. Smith has one of our, our swag jackets on that, that we have our, our team now, it looks like a team, so they have their uniform, so to speak. And thank her, thank you to Olivia for getting all that organized. And then also, I was at a SB CAG meeting last week, and as well as the Chamber Mixer, where they discussed real estate investment trends in the San Andres Valley. So thank you to the Chamber for hosting If there's nothing else, we'll move on to item six. Would you read that for us, please?
Consent items. Consent is for routine administrative city matters and is approved with one motion. These items are discussed only on request of council members. Members of the public were afforded an opportunity to speak during public communications portion of the agenda.
Thank you. I would like to rearrange the agenda just slightly with the consent of the rest of the board. I'd like to move item 8B to our next item before number seven for the benefit of our audience and the.
What's that got to do with consent items?
It's agenda item. It's part of the agenda, 6A.
Oh, the agenda is presented by.
Six.
8B is in Bravo.
Then I'll, I'll move that we, I'll move that we approve the consent items with the exception of item A and insert or move item 8B to follow item six.
You're moving item 6A.
Correct.
So can I second the motion with the accepted amendment to item 6A? Okay, so seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Infante?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Claudia Arona?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Elizabeth Arona?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move to, just because of that, we're going to move to item 8B as in Bravo. And that is the, well, why don't you read that for us, Madam Clerk?
Discussion and possible action to receive and file grant funding applications.
Okay, we're going to allow public comment on this after, and receive presentations up to three minutes in length. I am going to refuse myself, and I will be stepping out, and our Mayor Pro Tem Arona will be presiding. And due to a conflict of interest that one of the grant applications has a marital relation with myself, so. I'll, thank you. Relinquish to.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right, so please go ahead and start with staff report.
Okay, thank you. Wendy is here. Do you want to take this, Wendy?
Yes, I can take it. Greetings, council members from Huntington Beach. I am at a conference, so I am attending by Zoom. And our grant funding application period was open from February 1st to March 31st. Staff held two workshops on February 19th and March 11th. One of them was mandatory for each applicant, so we could go over the requirements and the required documents. In total, the staff report does say nine, but we actually received 12 grant funding applications. And out of those 12, we had four complete, which mean they submitted all the required documents by the time period on March 31st. However, the, during the presentation to the Budget Ad Hoc Committee, the Ad Hoc Committee decided to give a one-time courtesy week extension for the applicants who did not submit any, all, all of the required documents. And to date, we have had every grant funding applicant submit all the required documents. The biggest problem was we had two that were delinquent from either the DOJ or the Secretary of the State, and then the insurance requirements. So with that, I'll let Randy call up the applicants because I can't see who's there, but they were all noticed, that they could come and present tonight to the council of why their program needs grant funding. So with that, Randy, if you look at the grant funding applicant recap, we could call each applicant up by alphabetical order to be, I guess, make it easier for everybody to present.
Okay, thanks, Wendy. So we're going to take them in order by, as they're presented on the staff report. If, if you're here, please stand up and walk to the podium, and you'll have three minutes. So Attar Dag at Home is first, and then Bethania Food Distribution is after that.
Hello, I'm Karen Brown, Director of Attar Dag at Home and the Meals on Wheels Program. Thank you, City Council and staff, for your generous support of $10,000 grant last year. It was very much appreciated and necessary to ensure we continue to provide food and services for vulnerable seniors. The Attar Dag Village has been preparing and delivering Meals on Wheels since its inception in 1969. The program was nearly discontinued in 2016, and Attar Dag at Home Incorporated was established to prevent that from happening. In 2024 alone, Attar Dag at Home prepared and delivered close to 25,000 meals. Imagine the number of seniors who may have gone without if that had happened. The number of seniors continues to increase every day, and 70% of those seniors live right here in the City of solving. Half of our seniors are on a full scholarship because their monthly income is so small they can't afford to pay for meals. Many seniors struggle behind our neighborhood doors to get enough nutrients to stay healthy. Many simply can't afford to purchase healthy food, while others lose their appetite or motivation to eat from loneliness or mobility issues. And some are just physically unable to cook. Food insecurity and malnutrition isn't just about hunger, but also chronic disease and the ability not to, not to be able to cook. Food insecurity and malnutrition isn't just about hunger, but also chronic disease and higher healthcare costs. I feel blessed to live in a community where residents and senior leaders care about the vulnerable seniors in our community. Recently, I've heard from many cities across from America that are being affected by federal funding for meal programs. Luckily, our Attar Dag at Home Meals on Wheels is funded by the City of solving, as well as local foundations and individuals. I would like to add that Meals on Wheels is so much more than just a meal. In addition to providing seniors with necessary nutrients for a healthy diet, national statistics daily say they prevent eight out of 10 recipients who have fallen from falling again. Daily deliveries by our 241 dedicated volunteers provide a sort of wellness check for our seniors, and for those that want it, a form of human connection. It is a wonderful thing to witness friendships being made through our program. Our volunteers regularly share how rewarding it is to give back while caring for the seniors in our community. Recently, we added a safety and wellness component to our program, such as helping to install safety features in their homes or a one-time cleaning for low-income seniors. They have been welcomed and much needed to our program. Tonight, I am asking the City Council for $20,000 for our life-saving program. Since the beginning of 2025, the price of food, labor, and gas are rising. It is so important that we continue to serve homebound seniors, veterans, and disabled adults with nutritious food and social services, to allow seniors to stay in their home as long as they are able. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Are there any questions? No? Okay.
So, well, Bethania Food Diet Distribution. And by the way, reminder, tonight, the council is not actually acting on this. This is an opportunity to present and summarize your application. Thank you. After this is San Andres Valley Aquatics.
Good evening. My name is Linda Marzullo. I'm co-chairman of the Bethania Tuesday Food Distribution. Thankfully, we got a grant from the city last year for $2,000, but we are asking for more this year. We have been in operation for over five years, and it's a sad fact that we still need to provide food to so many local people who are not able to do so for themselves. Recent cuts to federal funding and USDA food allocation programs, including cancellation of federal contracts with local produce growers connected to the Santa Barbara County Food Bank, is going to affect area food distributions and local farmers. It is paramount that additional support be given to keep our local families healthy. Santa Barbara County Food Bank has reduced even further what it provides to agencies as a direct result of government cuts. Bethania will need to purchase and secure more food than ever in order to meet the needs of our local families. A shocking statistic is that Northern Santa Barbara County has the second highest poverty rate in all of California's 58 counties. And from what we see coming through our lines, I believe it. The number of households currently receiving food assistance at Bethania has jumped from an average of 180 per week at the end of last year to current average of 266 per week, and these are different families each week. We anticipate with the cuts to federal programs, including school lunches and other food assistance programs, that our numbers are going to rise again. Being 100% volunteer of organization, every penny donated goes towards the purchase of food and program needs. There are no staff costs. We have a great team of volunteers that are highly dedicated. And this means that every dollar contributed to our program is spent on providing food to those who need help. We can also then offer specialized food to our most vulnerable clients, infants, toddlers, and the elderly. The majority of our clients are working in service industry jobs, and these are the people who clean our hotels, work in our restaurants, pick our food, provide basic services. They're the ones that make our tourism work and our quality of life here in the San Andres Valley so high. And they all share the common reality of food insecurity. We help teenagers who come because they don't have enough food in the house to eat, and elderly neighbors who have outlived their resources. We help working mothers who need formula and baby food. We help households that don't want to come and get food from us, but they have to, to be able to pay their rent. Please consider helping us support local people who need assistance in our beautiful city. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Thank you so much.
Okay, San Andres Valley Aquatics, followed by San Andres Valley Fruit, Fruit, and Vegetable Rescue.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and members of the council. Thank you for having us this evening. I'm Lisa Palmer. I am the president of the San Andres Valley Community Aquatics Foundation and the chair of our capital campaign. The mission of the foundation is to bring aquatics access to all valley residents. Our valley has the least access, which is zero, to public swim in the county of Santa Barbara today. So our goal is to bring a state-of-the-art two-pool complex, a competition pool to replace the aging non-competition high school pool, and a companion recreation warm-water pool that would serve for learn-to-swim, our seniors, and recreation swim. So many of you know, or maybe you don't, that we've been at this for some time now. In 2017, we had the opportunity to purchase at a discount the Olympic Trial Pool used in 2016. We brought that to the valley with great fanfare. And we then continued to fundraise. We applied for a Prop 68 state grant. And as part of that grant process, we created an MOU between the High School District, the City of Buellton as our programming partner, and the foundation as a fundraising entity to raise funds for the effort. Come early 2020, we were unsuccessful in getting that Prop 68 grant. COVID hit, and we were paused because our partner, our landlord, the district, had other priorities to deal with during COVID, like educating children. So we were delayed in renegotiating a new MOU. So the pause occurred because of those factors. What got us going again is in 2023, we negotiated a new MOU with the High School District, and that's what really reinvigorated the fundraising effort. So since mid-2023, we have raised about $1.5 million. Our goal is 13.7 million, and we're looking to do that by the end of 2026. It's a very ambitious goal. We understand that. But due to the partnerships where we formed with the City of Buellton, the City of solving has really come forward, and thank you for that as a partner. You passed the resolution a few weeks ago in support of the complex. We're asking now for a financial commitment, whether it's on this cycle or when we're ready to begin construction. I'll leave that to you. But essentially, your residents, your 6,000 residents will be getting a municipal pool for use. So that's it. If you have any questions, I'm here and happy to answer them. And thank you for your consideration, for your support thus far.
One quick question, please.
Mark.
If I remember reading your grant proposal, the $450,000 that you're asking for was pre-construction, but the construction cost is 13 million? So what's the total pre-construction cost?
Well, the pre-construction cost aside is about 330,000. Excuse me, that's it overhead. We've got about almost a million in design and permitting and engineering and environmental review costs.
And then that's on top of the 13 million to build it?
Correct. Actually, no, that's included in the 13.7.
Okay, that's what was confusing to me.
Yeah, that's part of the, we, yeah, that's part of the project cost to get it to construction.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
San Andres Valley Fruit and Vegetable Rescue, I believe we're in line. And then after that will be the San Andres Valley Historical Museum.
Well, hello, good evening. I'm Erin Shugart, and I am the new executive director at Veggie Rescue. We are very grateful for the past support we've received from the council, and we're respectfully requesting consideration for. respectfully requesting consideration for a $10,000 grant. So, I'm going to just quickly roll through my presentation, our vision as a community where everyone has access to fresh, nutrient-dense food with minimal environmental impacts from food waste. And we were founded 15 years ago, right here in the valley, when a small group of volunteers connected with a small group of farmers willing to open their fields for planting. And here we are, 15 years later. We work with 65 local farms and community donors and just over 50 nonprofit recipients. For a small nonprofit, our budget is under a half a million dollars with three drivers, myself, and soon a full-time program director. Our model is very simple and straightforward. We're a local solution. We're timely and flexible. And our bounty, last year, we rescued 630,000 pounds of food, and the estimated value of that food is over $1 million. Since inception, we have rescued 4 million pounds of food valued at $7 million. The recipients, most are people with low or low-to-moderate income levels. And you can see sort of the demographics there on the chart, but really, what everybody has in common is they're folks who are primarily very low-income. And we do donate food to Bethania, so they're one of our wonderful partners. And they spoke, Bethania spoke about hunger in Santa Barbara County. We have about a quarter of our residents facing food insecurity. Food insecurity has risen by 28% in the past five years. Recent funding cuts are likely to result in substantial additional increases in food insecurity, and we've had events, sponsorships decline due to budget cuts that our partners are facing. We have a significant number and percentage of children in our community who are food-insecure. And the Food Bank of Santa Barbara reports a significant increase in demand for food. And so, I've listed some of our local partners in the San Ynez Valley. About a third of the food that is donated to us goes to residents and organizations located in or near solving. Just a little bit more about the budget cut impacts. There has been a 50% cut in emergency food assistance programs, reducing the quantity of food going to food banks. Over a million is being cut from the Food Bank of Santa Barbara County's budget, which is about 10%. The USDA has terminated programs that have enabled food banks and schools to purchase fresh produce from local farmers, cutting $1 billion in funding. And 330 truckloads of food recently destined for food banks has been suspended. So, moving forward, our goals are to grow our capacity, expand our farm partnerships to increase the amount of food that's donated to us, and increase our collaboration with our nonprofit partners, strengthen our organizational capacity, and invest in projects that deepen our impact in the community, as well as educate the community about food waste production and nutrition. I'll just have the pictures of us in action and here at the, that's actually the Buellton Senior Center, and then up in Santa Maria at the Salvation.
Hi, Sharon. Well, I have to interrupt you because there were only three minutes allowed, and you've gone over that time.
Okay. My apologies. Well, thank you very much for the opportunity to present, and we're very grateful for your consideration of our request. I'll stop sharing. Thank you, and good night.
Okay. Next up is the San Ynez Valley Historical Museum, followed by San Ynez Valley People Helping People. Historical museum here? Or online? Does not look like it. About People Helping People. And here comes Erica. After Erica will be the Solvang Arts and Music Foundation, the School Education Foundation. So, after the school will be San Ynez Valley Western Heritage Foundation.
All right. Good evening. My name is Erica Flores, and I'm the CEO of San Ynez Valley People Helping People, headquartered right here in the city of solving. PHP serves families, seniors, and individuals across San Ynez and Los Alamos Valleys. But tonight, I'm here to highlight the services we provide specifically here in solving and to invite you to invest $15,000 into specifically our work in the solving supportive services network. Solving is the heart of our operations, and here we have our headquarters and client service center on Alisal Maple. We operate a network of family resource centers, including to serve right here our solving elementary students and the students at San Ynez High School. Twice monthly, we have our food distribution at Mission San Ynez, and weekly, deliver groceries and prepared meals from Feed the Valley and delivered from local rotarians. Food rescue and redistribution twice weekly in solving. In fact, you can find Joe Tyson leaving his early morning gym workout to pick up food at Albertson's and deliver it for a very early morning distribution out of our parking lot. We have a five-day-a-week emergency food pantry in our headquarters with personal care items, adult diapers, and even pet food. And seven days a week, we have our outdoor food pantry. Annually, and this year, our 30th year, we celebrated, of our fulfill-wish holiday boutique and holiday food and coat distribution, bringing relief and dignity to hundreds of local families. While our services span the valley, this grant is solely focused on solving residents, supporting working families, seniors, and individuals struggling to stay housed, fed, and stable. Beyond relief, we are deeply committed to building long-term sustainability. We conduct evidence-based 10-week strengthening families courses involving the entire family with shared meals and youth programming. Launching in May, we will have our popular parent support groups led by our local licensed mental health professionals. Every day, our case managers work one-on-one with individuals and families, set goals, create budgets, and build toward self-sufficiency. Our youth programs include a team of local team peer leaders that have delivered 24 presentations this year alone, urging substance use prevention amongst their peers. This past year, we met a mother and her two children, a valued employee at a prominent local care facility, and her children, promising students. Despite hard work, they've spent bouncing between a rented room, a motel, a friend's living room, all while navigating school and work right here in our local community. For five months, we've been hand-in-hand, working with an employer, their employer, schools, motels, side-by-side. Thank you.
San Ynez Valley Western Heritage Foundation, followed by the Chamber of Commerce.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and council members. Thank you for the opportunity to present on behalf of our foundation a grant request. My name is Kevin Murphy, and I am president of our nonprofit foundation. We are a 501(c)(3), the San Ynez Valley Western Heritage Foundation. Our foundation was formed to power our flagship community fundraising event, the Old San Ynez Days Rodeo. Our mission is dedicated to enriching our community by supporting local youth organizations, youth scholarships, and preserving the Western traditions and agricultural roots that run deep here in our valley. We started Ag Day at the high school, donated money to the Ag Departments, 4H, and FFA programs. We also donate to the Golden Circle of Champions, which is a youth cancer foundation here in the Santa Barbara County. I'm here tonight to request your support to help sustain and grow both our foundation and the cherished Old San Ynez Days Rodeo. Our rodeo fundraising event boosts not only tourism here in the solving, in solving, but our entire valley's culture, economy, and community spirit. Old San Ynez Days Rodeo was founded in 2018. We are a professional rodeo cowboys association sanctioned event held annually, which celebrates local culture, drives tourism, invests in our local youth, and brings our community together. It is run by volunteers and funded through ticket sales and donations. This event is our passion, and most importantly, affords us to give back to our community. Our rodeo is a quintessential expression of Western heritage and tradition. We take great pride in presenting this event for our community. We are approaching our sixth annual rodeo, and the dates this year are June 20 through the 22nd. It's held on the Chumash Land at Highway 246 in Meadowville. We have doubled in growth year after year, and we received a Most Improved Award last year from the Street Guidelines of the PRCA. We are currently sixth in the California Circuit for prize money awarded to the contestants. We draw the best professionals in the pro-rodeo circuit. With the closure of Fiesta Days in Santa Barbara, it is now more important for us to secure community involvement and support. We project between 6,500 and 7,000 people for the weekend attending this year's rodeo. Visitors will be staying in hotels, dining in restaurants, and shopping locally. All this will boost our tourism economy. We are hoping to secure the grant funds from the city of solving to increase our marketing and advertising, which in turn will increase attendance. Grant proceeds will allow us to market statewide and nationally with increased ads. We are wanting to advertise with the Cowboy Channel, which provides national exposure for the rodeo and city of solving.
That's time.
Thank you very much.
Chamber of Commerce, followed by Danish Days.
All right. Don't worry, I'm not going to go over the whole thing. Just wanted you to see how much work we've put into our new initiative. My name is Linda Palmer, and I provide.
Microphone. There you go.
My name is Linda Palmer, and I provide community outreach for the solving Chamber of Commerce, and it's been my privilege to work on our new solving safe initiative, which is to basically take advantage of the fact that we have a large unused emergency response resource called the Small Business Community. We obviously know that the city and the county take care of emergency and disaster response, but we also know it's very difficult to scale up when we have as many tourists as we do. Last year, we had 750,000 people, I've been told, just in the month of December. And for the county of Santa Barbara, that means we saw 40% to 60% more calls as well as delays during that period between when the call was made and when our first responders could find their way through the traffic and make it to the site. So, what we've done for our own personal sakes, obviously, since I live here in town, as well as for our small businesses, is to come up with what we are calling the solving safe initiative, to start a whole series of activities to help strengthen and provide better resilience for our small businesses. This first part of the initiative is we want to do what's called compliant emergency response training. And why compliant, I mean good Samaritan law. I've seen too many incidents where people stand around because they don't know what to do. I've seen incidents where people don't know how to talk to the first responders when they call 911, and there's delays because they don't know how to call for help. And second, I've seen people who are afraid to offer aid because of fear of being sued. And I've been at some employers who are afraid to give out a Band-Aid. So, we want to take that off the table, and we are asking for $46,500. That is 70% of what it costs to do the CERT training and the LEASTOS training to have approximately 50 businesses throughout the greater solving area concentrated mostly in the village, as well as approximately 150 either employers, employees, and key personnel like at Danish Days and Fourth of July, who can offer compliant good Samaritan aid. One of the things on the budget that's included in the grant application is laminated evacuation maps. I personally visited Ojai, Cambria, and Carmel by the sea to see what they do. I also have talked to a number of places, and one of the things we are lacking under good Samaritan is evacuation and shelter in place. And included in the proposal are some samples of what is being used in Cambria. So, majority of our ask of $46,500 is to train the 150 individuals, also to provide an evacuation map, which we currently don't have, and train to that map under good Samaritan laws. Any questions?
Okay. Danish Days, followed by the Rotary.
Thanks. Hi. My name is Cassandra Ferris. I'm the co-chair of the solving Danish Days Foundation. Our purpose is to organize and present the annual Danish Days Festival in the city of solving, which has been supporting and enriching Danish culture history, cultural history since 1936. We aim to promote solving as a destination with rich cultural heritage. We strive to offer a unique experience that highlights solving's history, community, Danish heritage, and traditions. We aim to provide a safe, clean, and entertaining weekend suitable for people of all ages, ensuring a fun time for both visitors and locals alike. We are a nonprofit organization, so we do solely rely on donations from our generous community, and your generous donations of last year have helped us make our festival successful every year. We rely on our sponsorships and volunteers to help our festival continue every year. This is Thomas, the president, and he will explain a little bit more of what we need for funding.
Yes. My name is Thomas Berkham. I'm also the chairman of Danish Days and a business owner here in solving. What this grant fund helps us do is we add additional bathrooms and wash stations throughout the town, a PA system that generates, starts in the middle of parking lot number two, and we do have speakers that go throughout the town. So, people can hear announcements, upcoming events, what bands are coming on stage, the tables and chairs rentals that we do out of Buellton. So, we kind of try to bring everything in-house in our valley for resources. And also, this is our third year as a new board member, so we're kind of working out the kink still. We did see an increase in town, I'd say about 4,000 to 6,000 people more from previous years. But we just hope that we get a grant from you guys and keep this 88th year of Danish Days going. Thank you.
Thank you.
Couple of questions before you run off, Tom. Thomas? What's the total budget for Danish Days?
Our budget is about $165,000.
Okay. So, what you're asking for is strictly the money to handle toilets, tables?
Yes. So, just between the toilets, table rentals, forklifts, tents, that was about $36,000 just for the rentals. That's not including entertainment and our other county permits and all that.
As well as extra security, maintenance of the city when, during the evening, and making sure that the streets are clean. So, we're upping.
We have a whole trash crew, too, that come.
Yeah, really.
Thank you.
Okay. Rotary, and then final presenter is the Viking Charities.
Good evening, Pro Tem Mayor and City Council. Thank you for the opportunity to present the case for the continued support of the Fourth of July Parade here in solving by the city. My name is Steve Palmer. I'm the chairman of the Fourth of July Parade Committee for the solving Rotary Club. We're the breakfast rotary. Next to me here is Valerie Kissel, our current president. And in the audience, we have Frank Smithson, who's our president-elect, whose term will start on July 1st. So, really, it's his responsibility. The Fourth of July Parade, really, as we all know, kind of speaks for itself. I think many of you have participated in it, and it's a great event for the city. We never had an exact formal count, but we think close, upwards of 5,000 people will line the streets of the city that kicks off an incredible day of celebration, culminating with the fireworks show that night that is also put on by a different solving, a different Rotary Club. A brief summary of the history of the parade and putting it on. For many, many years, solving presented the parade, and at some point, I'm thinking roughly 20, a little over 20 years ago, they were going to stop doing that, and the solving Rotary stepped in and since then has carried the flag and put on the parade each year, contacting entrance and organizing it and getting it all to work. And working with the city closely because we still needed the city's help in, you know, getting staffing out there, getting barricades up, and working with the sheriff, the street sweeping. But it was kind of a handshake agreement where you guys absorbed some costs, and we absorbed some costs. We made a few dollars back, usually not covering anything with the barbecue in the park, but we just, it worked out pretty well. But over time, it became more expensive for the sheriff's costs, more expensive for the street sweeping, and the city decided then we should maybe flip it around and apply for a grant, really just to cover the exact costs of what the parade would be. So, last year's grant was the first time we applied for a grant, stumbled through it, but made it through with the great help of Candace Libera. This year, we also submitted and had great help from Wendy Berry, as well as Candace, to get there. Figured out the insurance issue and got that all straightened out. And so, this year, and last year, we essentially asked for a certain dollar amount, and we ended up actually going under budget. ended up actually going under budget on that and really did it on rather than getting money from you, we submitted bills for reimbursement of the exact cost. And that's exactly what we're asking for again this year with an amount upfront of hopefully not to exceed. So that's what I have to say and thank you for the opportunity. Valerie, would you like to say anything or?
No, you were perfect.
Okay. Thank you again for the opportunity and for considering the grant this year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Vikings.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tem and City Council members. Before you start my time, a couple of key introductions. We have our current Viking chief, Joe Tyson, in the back. And I have co-chair Pete Thompson and co-chair Jordan Sedaris. All right, I'll go ahead if you can start it now. I'll start for you. My name is Greg Weitzman and I am the Viking Car Show Chairman along with these other fine gentlemen. We are here tonight requesting a grant from the city for the third annual Viking Classic Car Show. Before I get into our request, I need to mention a few changes. Roger Lane is no longer the chairman, but he had written the original grant request. His grant request had been for $3,355, but I'm requesting that you decrease that amount to $3,000. This is because there are a few items on the original grant request that have since been eliminated by the new committee members. Other significant changes for the car show for this year will include no beer and wine garden, no food vendors, and a program where local businesses will be able to get a, give a discount to all car show participants. We've been working closely with Tracy Baird and also with Candace has helped me out quite a bit. We are doing this to support the city of solving and its businesses during the car show. We realize that we cause a huge impact on the businesses due to lack of parking and et cetera. And in that light, we are going to encourage everyone to visit local shops, bars, and restaurants. This has not always been the case, but we're hoping to make this a friendly environment for everyone. There are a number of items that we have already purchased from the city, including posting of our banner over mission, the application fee, permit fees, and the city of solving fee. For those of you that don't know about the Vikings, we are a philanthropic organization that raises money for the medical needs of Santa Barbara County residents that may not be able to pay for serious medical issues or medical equipment. We do this through membership donations, a golf tournament, and our car show. There is no overhead and 100% of what we raise goes back to this community. We also host an annual Christmas party for some of the most seriously disabled children in our county. Last year, we fed almost 1,000 children and their caregivers at our annual event. In conclusion, everything that we raise goes back into this community. Please help us support our car show needs as you have done in the previous years. Thank you very much.
Any questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Now, it would be appropriate if there are any people, public comment.
All right, we call in for public comment? That's my job.
Yeah, well, I'm just trying to help.
All right, so we have a few slips for public comment. The first one is Lisa Palmer. You already spoke?
I was here with some confusion. Some of them filled out cards, but they didn't need to.
Yeah, we have Linda Marzullo. You got the opportunity to present as well. We have Steve Brown. All right.
Good evening, Mayor Brown in absentia, City Council members, ladies and gentlemen, and everyone else. I rise to speak in support of reducing food insecurity in our community and in support of the nonprofits requesting funding to do just that. In particular, at Bethania Lutheran, we distribute food to hundreds of families each week. It faces, along with other applicants, the direct impacts of cuts in federal funding. How we respond individually and as a community will speak to who we are, who and what we really care about and value. As some have said, we are living in a moral moment. You know, I was going to say the rest of this, but I have to say I'm experiencing some of emotional whiplash because at the first of the meeting, we're talking about how well we're doing with the tourism industry, how wonderful the advertising is for it and how much money we're going to make with that. And then we turn around and we talk about all the people who do the work and how many of them don't have enough food to eat. Now, I don't know what the numbers are, but I will tell you that probably about 1,000, maybe 1,500 people get fed through distribution effort alone each week. And the food insecurity rate in the county is again about a third, 1,500 is about a third of the people in solving. So I just want to say, I think that this is a moral moment. I believe that the agenda at the federal level is to push spending down to local and state governments and that it amounts to sort of a unfunded but profoundly moral mandate. And I hope that we rise to the occasion. It's not going to be easy. I think it's going to get more challenging and that we have to look at what our values really are and who we really care for. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments. Next up, we have Mr. Lee Rosenberg.
Thank you, council members, and compliments to those who have spoken about their very productive efforts in behalf of food acquisition and distribution. However, there appears because of reductions in grants and in economic flow that there is a substantial crisis here in the valley relative to the acquisition of food and its distribution. I've spoken to three or four organizations which were not aware of the switch from Tuesday to Monday of this meeting and as a consequence have not been heard. So I would like to speak in their behalf. We have a crisis. I have spoken at length to our Congressman Salud Carbahol, who has requested in detail the metrics and the data which support our need for federal help. And I would invite you to communicate with me so I can quickly, hopefully tomorrow or not later, communicate with Congressman Carbahol. My name is Lee Rosenberg. I've been pleased to give you my email address, which is rosey, R-O-S-E-Y, 3333@gmail.com. And I hesitate to provide a telephone number because as you can see, there is some difficulty in moving about my home. So please, for those of you who are here, I salute your efforts at a dag, Senior Center, Bethania, and people helping people. If you have specific needs that you would like to address to Congressman Carbahol, please communicate those to me as quickly as possible. And thank you very much for allowing me the time to speak to you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenberg. Do we have anybody else in person that wish to comment? Nobody in person? Okay, I see a hand up on Zoom.
Chrissy Castillo.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Chrissy Castillo. Thank you so much for the opportunity. I am the executive director at the San Ynez Valley Historical Museum and Parks Janeway Carriage House. I'm delighted to be able, that we were able to present a grant. We did have a few difficulties. I'm new to the nonprofit sector as well as to the process, and so this was a very enlightening educational experience and I thank you for the opportunity. Our grant was written by Mary Marinville, who could not be here this evening, but she is our development director. And our grant was specific to our Wild West camp that supports our youth in the valley and it's quite spectacular. Our board president, Tina McEnroe, who is educational and has been a teacher for many years, is the co-director, as well as Donna Davidson, who is a third grade teacher at Christian Academy. They team up together and have really, I've been able to partake in this, have really put quite a program together for the youth. And it is so well supported by our youth in the valley that we have many returning students. And this year, we have already five returning and 15 signed up so far. But where we're finding that we really would like to do scholarships to the underserved and this grant would help with that, as well as school field trips. We have one planned that will be at Pleasant Valley School, which is on the McEnroe La Prisma Ranch. And we take them back to the old times in the late 1800s to the 1900s with proper dress and how kids went to school back then and how they learned. And the children really enjoy it quite a bit. But in that, we will need transportation for the children and we would like to see more children from around the valley able to participate in more of our programs at the museum. And I think that that's as much as I want to speak to at this point and I thank you so much.
Thank you so much for your comments and presentation. I don't see anybody else in Zoom wanting to speak, so public comment is now closed. We take it back to council for discussion. I understand we're not making a decision on this tonight. This was merely to receive the presentation, so we will receive that and file. Thank you so much to everybody that applied and we will be in touch at a later date. Thank you for everything that you do for our community. And with that.
I just want to point out, so this is going to go back with the Budget Ad Hoc Committee. There'll be some recommendations come forward to the full council. That meeting and initial discussion will happen on June 9th. So that way, then there'll be conversation about which grants to fund, et cetera, so at that time.
All right, thank you. So shall we? You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting.
And if you are leaving, we're still continuing the meeting, so if you could please leave the room.
Make it painful, yeah. Okay. Would you read that for us, please?
Public hearing to consider adoption of resolution number 251282 updating and establishing user and regulatory fees for various city services.
Thank you very much. Staff report, please.
Wendy.
I'd like to present to you Terry Madsen. He's with Clear Source and he's the one who has done the fee schedule. In 2021 was the last time we had it actually adopted and back then, there wasn't a lot of staff here, so there was a lot of fees that were not included in the fee study. So this time, we actually had a quite comprehensive study completed. And if you guys decide to adopt it, it'll take effect in 60 days, which is July 1st. And the public hearing notices were published on 410 and 417. So with that, I'd like to welcome Terry Madsen from Clear Source and he will present his report.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Terry, just a moment. Point of order, are we, we're not voting on anything here tonight. This is public.
For this, we are voting, yes. That's, it's a public hearing.
Okay.
So we weren't doing anything with the grants, but this one we will.
Very well, thank you. Point of order. Thank you, Terry, go ahead. Sorry to interrupt.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. Thank you for allowing me to speak with you this evening. As mentioned, my name is Terry Madsen. I'm here from Clear Source and our firm helps communities throughout the state identify the cost of providing specific services and then thinking through strategy for recovery of those costs. The city has completed what we call a user and regulatory fee study. I have about 30 slides to walk the council through this evening. I know it has been a long evening, so I will do my best to avoid being long-winded. I'll move quickly through the slides and then make myself available to the City Council wherever you want to dive deeper. Just by way of agenda for this presentation, the first part of it is common to California. So it is thinking about community after community in California. We'll talk about background, fundamentals, and terminology, and then we'll conclude with a dive specifically into solving and the recommendations before the City Council this evening. Next slide, please. Next slide. So just by way of background, as I mentioned, cities in California collect fees and charges when they are providing a service specifically on behalf of or at the request of a specific person, business, entity, rather than the community as a whole. Next slide. So generally, we can think about communities as using your tax dollars, your limited general fund resources to provide broad services that have broad community-wide benefit like public safety, public works, park maintenance-type services. And we see communities using mechanisms like fees and charges when they provide a specific service like plan review or construction inspection or specialized permitting. So direct receiver of service, direct recovery of cost, broad receiver of service, broad use of general tax dollars. Next slide. The fees that are being discussed this evening and are for council consideration are what we call service-based fees, so there is some human providing a service. We're typically thinking about like building permitting, entitlement review, review of construction for requests for compliance with zoning code, engineering and encroachment permit fees and so forth. We are not examining taxes. We are not examining utility rates. We're not examining assessments. So the things that sort of as solving residents and businesses we encounter on a day-to-day basis, we are not considering those as part of this item. We are considering discreet periodic activities that are usually regulatory in nature or discreet requests for service. Next slide.
If I could interrupt for one moment, Mr. City Attorney, should we officially open the public hearing? Not until public comment. Okay, I was asked a question, so just want to confirm that. Thank you.
Next slide. One more, please. So why do cities throughout California conduct these studies from time to time? The number one reason is to comply with legal requirements. Because these are fees and not taxes, we want to make sure that we're complying with the rule of the law around fees and charges. And those are outlined in the California Constitution and the California And those are outlined in the California Constitution and the California Government Code. And the big idea is we don't want to turn this into a profit-making endeavor. We don't want to exceed our cost of service. So for fee services, you can charge up to your cost of service, but not beyond it. The idea is cost recovery. The other reasons we do that is when we recover the cost of providing these services, by definition, we are freeing up general fund resources to be used towards other services and other needs. And then finally, I think this bullet is important, the bottom bullet. When we recover our cost of service, it helps us continue to meet the service level expectation of the community. Next slide. So I mentioned the idea of the legal requirements. We want to identify what is the city's cost of providing these various services? And then the council can use that information to determine whether they wants to collect fees in line with those costs or a different amount. You just don't want to exceed that. And then the other sort of broad idea is costs should correlate to sort of in level of intensity. So something that's minor in nature and sort of easy to perform for staff would have a lower cost associated with it and likely a lower fee. Something that's more intensive and requires longer review time and longer processing time would have a higher cost and likely a higher fee. That's what the Constitution and government codes sort of guide us in that area. Next slide. Because these are fees and not taxes, they are adopted by the city council. So you adopt them. You can amend them from time to time as your organization shifts, as you receive new information, as legislation changes. But these are adopted by the city council at the conclusion of a public hearing. Next slide. In the staff report, in my presentation, I reference these concepts of cost of service, cost recovery and subsidy. And in all our worlds, we may use these phrases from time to time. So I just want to make sure that we're speaking the same language for this particular topic. So I'll dive into these very briefly. Next slide, please. The idea of cost of service, because these are service-based fees, really, we're thinking about like, what is the value of our time? And how long does something typically take us? For the majority of your fees, you could understand cost of service in that way. So if I know that this is a two-hour effort and something else is a four-hour effort, the two-hour effort would have half the cost as the project with a four-hour effort. That cost represents our ceiling. Next slide, please. Once the council understands what are the costs, you frequently go through an exercise to figure out, do I want to recover all of that cost or a portion of it? And a lot of times councils use this chart fundamentally to make that decision. And what they think through is if something is like a clear beneficiary, a high direct service, a very clear correlation between service provided, then we frequently think about high cost recovery levels. So an example we might use is if I add square footage to my home, if I remodel my kitchen, something like that, I am the beneficiary of enhanced property values. I get to enjoy the new square footage, all of those things that come with that. And so if there is a cost to reviewing that construction and it is not recovered from me as the constructor, it is paid from the city of solving and essentially is paid from some other solving resource, and that's typically your general fund tax dollars. And so essentially, the neighbors, other businesses are paying for a portion of that. So frequently in the development world, we think of high cost recovery levels. It's something that might have high community benefit. Might be if we want a pumpkin patch to come to town or a Christmas tree lot, or we want to encourage certain types of signage to enhance the downtown area. We might say there's community benefit in that, even though there is a direct beneficiary as well. And sometimes cities target lower cost recovery levels for those types of service because they say, I do see the individual benefit, but I also see a community benefit there. Next slide. The idea here is your cost of service is the city of solving's cost of service. If you choose to set a fee less than that, it is totally your prerogative as a council. What you just want to remember is that cost is incurred. And what we would say is if you set a fee at less than full cost of service, we would call that partial cost recovery. The applicant paid for some of the service and some other solving resource was used to cover the differential. Next slide. So all of what you've just heard is common to California. It applies to Buellton. It applies to Santa Barbara County. It applies to the city of Antura. And it's consistent throughout the state. Now we'll talk specifically about solving to conclude the presentation. As Wendy mentioned, the last fee study was completed in 2021. Your fees have remained unchanged since that time, and this is common. So cities typically perform a study like this maybe every three to five years. They don't do this kind of undertaking on an annual basis, but they may adjust their fees in the in-between years. But about three, four years ago, you completed a similar study. What we're seeing is because you, like every other city in California, are facing inflationary pressures. You have increased insurance costs, increased utility costs, increased personnel costs, all those kinds of things, that there is opportunity to enhance your cost recovery. Your costs are higher than they were several years ago. And so the analysis indicates you could adjust fees without exceeding your cost of service. Next slide. We, your schedule includes hundreds of items. And so at the council level, it's unrealistic in an environment like this to walk through all hundred of those items, but you do have it in your staff report. Instead, we think about the 30,000-foot level, and we give you broad ideas of what you can expect. So we think by broad category, building fees, planning fees, engineering fees. And the reason you have hundreds of fees, again, that is consistent throughout the state because you're trying to contemplate the various scenarios that could walk through the door in any given year. And some of them may be very infrequent, and some of them may be very common. But you're just trying to give yourself that broad spectrum. But when we talk with you, we talk about at the high level, what are we seeing in building planning and so forth? So in the building fee world, this is your like most common fee categories, building permit fees. And we see about 67% cost recovery currently. Communities typically target full cost recovery. That's what we see in the industry. We believe that you could restructure your fees with staff input. The idea is to restructure your fees to enhance the correlation between the service that's being provided and the fee that's being collected. Specifically in the building world, your fees have historically relied on project valuation. So an applicant comes in and says, I would like to get a building permit. Staff has to say, what is the value of this project? And that's going to help inform your fees. Sometimes that can create challenges where you're trying to figure out like, hey, these are similar projects, but they're coming in with different valuations. And so staff felt that we could modify the structure and just think about what is the actual type of construction activity happening? And say, for this type of construction activity, this will be the fee. And so your proposed schedule reduces sort of this requirement to think through project valuation. Instead, thinks about, do you need a HVAC changeout? Are you remodeling 100 square feet or 300 square feet and so forth? The proposed fees do scale, so a less intensive project would have a lower fee than a more intensive project. So it is built to scale to the various scenarios that could come through the door. Next slide. In the planning world, full cost recovery is targeted for most of the planning fees. The idea here is that these fees are primarily regulatory. There is a clear benefit when somebody is doing private construction activity to the enjoyment of the property enhancements, the increased property values and so forth. And when we do target higher cost recovery levels, we are avoiding having other solving residents and businesses pay for somebody else's private construction. There are a few areas where less than full cost recovery is targeted. I've highlighted those for the council. One of the areas is sign permitting, I think downtown signage. I mentioned the idea of like temporary use permitting and then pre-application review. When you're trying to encourage high-quality submittals, you're trying to encourage people to come in the door and figure out what are you looking for as a city? There is a cost to that, but staff has recommended a reduced fee for that to encourage good quality submittals and community collaboration. Next slide. You also have this world called engineering fees. It's reviewing improvements in the right-of-way. It's when utilities want to come in and encroach in the city's right-of-way and so forth. These are common fees. They have been modified to reflect your current costs of service. And we do target full cost recovery in these areas. Next slide. In the recreation and facility rental world, they face unique challenges. The community services world face unique challenges because they really do, they are impacted by increases in utility costs like water rates, electricity rates and so forth, increases in seasonal labor costs, California mandatory minimum wages and so forth. And so they do face pressure just like any other city department. Next slide. When we think through strategy for potentially adjusting community, like reserved use of city space, we think strategically about it, and we try and think, how could we continue to sort of value our nonprofits, prioritize our residents and say, we have access to these community spaces, but you're looking to reserve them for a specific purpose and so forth? And so you do have existing fees in place. There is no new fees proposed. But what is proposed is an adjustment to your current fees. We thought about it, and we said, since the time of the city's last study, if you look at the region, the region has experienced 15% cost inflation. You've had California minimum wage cost inflation of 14% since the last study. And so most of your reserved use of city space fees are recommended to increase by roughly 15%. There's some rounding in there. If you look at that over the three-year window, if you annualize that over the time since the last update, it would be about a 5% rate of increase. And the fee adjustments are just rounded for administration. Next slide, please. I know this can be a topic of sensitivity for communities because it's not regulatory in nature. And sometimes it is our service groups that want to make use of these facilities and so forth. And so I wanted to highlight a couple of examples. If you wanted to rent the large hall at the Veterans Memorial, you could rent it for up to six hours today if you were a nonprofit for $190. Tomorrow, if the council adopted updated fees effective July 1, that rate would be 225. That's the idea of that inflationary adjustment, nothing beyond inflation. And that equates to a change of about $6 an hour over that six-hour window. That's for the nonprofit. If you were like a family, like a local resident, a private solving resident, and you wanted to reserve the space for a wedding banquet or something like that, you know, the current rate would be 410, the proposed rate would be 475. That's a change equivalent of $11 an hour. I want to emphasize that the rates that are proposed for your consideration continue to prioritize solving residents and nonprofit renters. They have reduced rates compared to like a commercial renter or an out-of-area renter. And the idea behind adjusting these rates at all is if you leave rates unchanged in an inflationary environment, you don't actually stay the same. You go backwards. So it's not an idea of enhancing your cost recovery. It's just not going backwards. It's just trying to stay stable at your levels. Next slide. A lot of times the council says, if I understand conceptually what's being presented, if I were to adopt these fees, would I position solving as some sort of regional outlier? And again, we mentioned there's hundreds and hundreds of fees. So it's impractical to compare all the fees. Instead, we sort of looked, can we see patterns? Do we see any sort of general information that would tell us what to expect? I will say that we conduct the analysis in its entirety before we ever do any comparison work. So we conduct a cost of service analysis that is linked to solving's costs. We think through a proposed fee setting strategy. And then at the conclusion, we say, how would this align to the region? And is there anything catching our attention? What we would say is in the regional fee comparison, we looked at the idea of if you modified from your current building fee structure to your proposed building fee structure that reduces that reliance on valuation and instead thinks through what type of construction would that be positioned as a regional outlier? And we would say, no. Santa Barbara County has a similar fee schedule. And so if contractors are doing work in the county, they should be familiar with this proposed fee structure. Next slide. And then we thought about like, are there fees that sort of appear sort of from agency to agency to agency? And they are relatively consistent? And do we see any patterns emerging? And so we just grabbed a few. If you go to Ventura, Galita, Lompoc, Buellton, you are going to see a fee for a variance. That is going to appear in the schedule, and a variance is fairly consistent. What you see today is that solving has a deposit. You're moving to a proposed fixed fee for a variance. And all you're doing is continuing to remain in line with the region. Next slide. Zone change. Today, your current deposit is at the lower end of the region. You would have the opportunity to recover more if needed because it's only an initial deposit. But your proposed deposit is a better alignment to what an applicant could expect to pay for this type of service. Again, you're just positioning yourself right in line with the region, but it wasn't deliberately to get you there. It was just based on your own analysis. Next slide. General Plan Amendment appears from agency to agency to agency. And again, we're seeing a little bit of upward adjustment, but just maintaining your position within the region. Next slide. And thinking through the fiscal impact of the proposed changes, we anticipate about a $71,000 annual impact of this. And it could be higher or lower depending on development patterns, depending on what comes through the door. You know, this type of impact would be more significant if your population was 100,000 than 6,000. But there is room for enhanced cost recovery, and that is what's proposed this evening. It's important to note that this would be, this is to recover costs that solving is already incurring. So it's not proposing some sort of service level enhancements. It's, these are costs you face today that are not currently being recovered for services provided. Next slide. Next steps for council consideration would be to consider adopting the resolution that would establish fees effective July 1, 2025. The resolution also authorizes an annual inflationary update for periods in between these studies. Most agencies we work with seem to have annual inflationary adjustments in between years so that you can have this sort of more gentle pattern versus sort of long periods of stagnation followed by potential fee spikes. Thank you for your attention. This concludes my presentation. If you have any questions or feedback, I'm happy to receive them.
Thank you. Mark, you have a question?
Yeah, a couple of things. You said no new fees, but on page 127, it lists all the fees, and you got two of them that say new.
No new recreation, reserve facility rental fees. Like in your recreation world, I just wanted to highlight that even though there was proposed adjustments to your reserved uses, we weren't creating any new categories. There are two new fees proposed. One is called a general plan update fee. And another is a development technology fee. Those are common throughout the state as well. And the idea is, you know, they will recover a fraction of the city's costs. But as a city, you budget annually for sort of ongoing costs. But you incur periodic costs that don't appear in your budget for housing elements, zoning code updates, general plan updates, maybe software replacement and so forth. And so a lot of times agencies earmark certain fees for to help offset the cost of a future expense. That's the idea of those two fees.
Who pays them?
Developers at the building permit stage.
So you're going to add a fee into the developers' costs, developers' fees, that will help general plan updates, paying for general plan updates and things of those nature. Okay.
They are specific to those services, yes.
Another question I had was that you listed currently, we're at 67%. Another question I had was that you listed currently, we're at 67% of service costs. But you're, this is, you're again, looking at the summary proposing a change of only 21%. That doesn't get us up to 100%.
We tried to err on the side of conservative with our initial revenue forecast because you're modifying your fee structure. Our goal is full cost recovery and we have structured the fees to target full cost recovery.
Do the fees change through time? Do we have any kind of an, uh, an appreciation into those fees through time?
Yes. Your res, adopting resolution authorizes an annual inflationary adjustment. It doesn't give you, you know, an, in, you are still bound by law to not exceed your estimated reasonable cost of service. So you would come back from time to time to compare your costs to your fees. But the idea is annually, these fees would adjust slightly.
Thank you.
I do have another question. Obviously, we, we do not get full cost recovery on everything. So what is the city subsidizing? In previous studies, I've seen it's mostly like they used the facilities such as parks and things like that. But I wanted to get your summary on where is the city most likely to recover full costs and where, you know, where we're pitching in for the benefit of everybody.
In this proposal before the city council, the idea is generally you would target full cost recovery in the development-related world, building, planning and engineering, with a few minor exceptions. Your primary subsidy is in that recreation world. You have low, you have high costs of maintaining facilities and so forth. Those facilities are, are available for use by the general public. This is reserved, dedicated, timing and so forth. But the cost recovery levels are low in the recreation world and they would continue to stay that way. That's a subsidized program by the city. And then the two new fees that the council member mentioned, I mentioned that you, you will not get to full cost recovery there. And the idea is that they are added commonly in California as a, like a, a percentage of your building permit fee. So you're going to pay a building permit fee and then I'm going to add a percentage for the general plan update fee. I'm going to add a percentage for this development technology fee. Those activities are so intense that the cost of a general plan update is so large that if you wanted to try and recover the full cost of that service from the fee payer, the surcharge would be bigger than the fee itself. And so it's just disproportionate. You just can't get there.
So the question, similar lines where everyone else is questioning, do we have a new calculation? If we move to this 21% change, what is our new percentage of cost recovery? Different from the 67? That would drive us to take action. But do we know what it, the new calculation would be?
He's hiding from that question.
He totally dodged it.
I'm not hiding. Let me see if I have.
It was funny from this visual.
And now I need to put my glasses on.
While you're looking that up, I'll, I'll just make the comment that you articulated very well for us in that the, you know, we clearly have a need to update or at least revisit our fee status. 67% cost recovery is probably too low, even considering that we're subsidizing. We would remain subsidizing certain shared benefit, you know, fee-structured activities. In an inflationary period, he's exactly correct that if we were not to take action, we're actually going backwards. But it's good that CPI is built in. I would, I just want to ask the question while we're waiting for the other answer. The CPI is, is not, it, it's still an opportunity for us to accept CPI or reject it. It's not predetermined. Is that correct?
The res, uh, I would have to check the authorizing language in the resolution. Give me just a moment. I can check that for you.
Well, let's, and so I've got, and I don't mean to spray you with questions all at the same time, but that, that.
Sure you do.
No problem. We'd check the resolution language to see if the word is may or shall. I think the word is usually may.
Okay.
But let me just check.
The resolution language says, beginning in 2026 on July 1 of each year, the fees in the fee schedule will change based on the Consumer Price Index for the Los Angeles, Long Beach, Anaheim, California area. If the CPI does not change or decrease, no change shall be made to the fees adopted by this resolution.
So if it's flat, we don't change?
We don't.
Correct. If it increases, we change?
Correct.
That makes sense.
We don't, we don't get to weigh in again.
Well, well, this is a resolution. It's a policy statement by the council. So the council always has the ability to, to change policy. But as a matter of course, without action by the council, this is what would happen. But you have the ability to step in any time you like. You're not adopting an ordinance here.
I'm going to save my comment until I have this other question answered, the percentage cost recovery.
You know, I apologize, but I do not have what you are looking for specifically. I thought I would have had that in the re, if, I thought, is he asking me something that's not in the report? So what I can tell you based on our report is that, give me a moment. I will, I will talk in one second and then we'll decide whether I have what you need or not. I'm trying to figure out if I can answer you quickly. And I would say that when you reference the 67% cost recovery, that is building-specific. So it's not city of solving in the aggregate. That was a sub, that was linked to building fees. And so we are trying to take building fees from 67% cost recovery to full cost recovery. That is our goal. We are trying to take planning fees from roughly 90% cost recovery to 100% cost recovery. You will still have non-fee-funded planning services. You know, in the planning world, you do some fee-related services and a whole bunch of non-fee-related services like regional planning, long-range planning and so forth. This is limited to the current fee-related planning activities. In the engineering world, we want to get to full cost recovery. We think there's room to enhance your cost recovery there based on the modified fee structure. Where you will not receive full cost recovery is in the parks, field and facility rentals. And I'm going to tell you what I think your cost recovery level is. So in parks, field and facility rentals, let's see if I have it. Let's just say for the Veterans Memorial Building. For the Veterans Memorial Building, we believe the cost recovery rate is currently 30%. And it will essentially stay at 30%. For HCA Park, that's another area that could potentially be rented. The cost recovery is about 7%. For Sunny Fields, the cost recovery is about 12%. So it depends on the area, but the reality is you're looking in the 20% or less-ish cost recovery for the parks and rec world. And I would say in the general plan update fee and the development services technology fee, you're really in the 5% range.
We're just getting going. Okay, I'm good with that. You really, thank you for indulging the question. And I think that while you were doing that, I was thinking that if we were going to hover anywhere near 80% for a blend, then built-in CPI would move us, you know, beyond that potentially year after year. But in fact, year after year, our costs would be going up.
Yes.
So that, that is just a net neutral wash. Okay, I'm, thank you.
And did you get your resolution question solved? Thank you. I apologize for the delay getting that information.
Any other questions? Okay, I had a quick question as it related to the technology charge and the general plan. You have a, a 5% charge for the building permit for each. So that means each, each building permit would have an additional or a total 10% surcharge for those. Do I understand that correctly?
Every building permit issued would have the development technology fee. So like a water heater change out, a re-roof and so forth. The general plan update fee would only apply to true, like new construction projects that make use of the general plan in order to be approved. So it would not apply to your minor permits, your day-to-day projects that come in the door.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And the, the, the cost of living item, is there in the resolution? And I'm, I'm sorry, I don't have it directly.
No problem.
Would that, would that language allow it to, to roll to the nearest whole dollar? Or is it something we need to be? Six, $67.24. Yeah, I mean.
No, we, we round to, to dollars, but we typically don't round up. We just round to the nearest dollar. So we're not trying to force ourselves up or downwards, rounding to the nearest dollar.
Okay. Well, and it is at cost. It's not, it's not meant to be profitable.
Correct.
Understand that. Okay. I just didn't know if that language was in it. I guess we're, we're now, uh, we're able to receive public comment, open to, open to public hearing. And I don't have any slips, but I see some hands. Would you like to come up to the podium? Give us your name and which item you would like to discuss.
Steve, and I just have a question for you. Will the change from a valuation number to a complexity number speed up the process? That's it.
Thank you. So our study was not intended to like modify your organization structure, modify your permit or plan review process. So I would say the answer is no. It, our, our fee calculation has no impact on processing time.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from Zoom or the room? Okay, I will close the public hearing and come back for discussion. Mr. Murphy?
I just wanted to add a couple of things to the conversation. It's on. When I started two years ago today, by the way.
Happy anniversary.
Thank you. One of the things.
Did you hear that?
I did. I, I, I realized that there were several complications in the way our fees were structured. Some of our fees had, were codified. They were in the city code. And so there was, at one point in the past, we decided we needed to raise the business certificate fee. But the code said it was supposed to be $35. We had raised it to 50. We had to reduce it back to 35 because it was in the code. So one of the changes we made a year and a half ago, the, it was a rewrite of a lot of the language that had anything to do with dollars and cents in the code. And it made a reference now instead to as adopted by resolution of the council. So that as we make changes like this, then we don't have to worry about what the code says. Supposedly, we port over it. I know Anna Marie spent a lot of time on it, looking for anything that references a dollar value. And, and to the best of our knowledge, collective wisdom, et cetera, take that as you will. We've eliminated all of those conversations. That will help quite a bit. And that's really what I wanted to say about, about the fees. So as these fees change in the future by council's, you know, adoption and CPI, et cetera, we don't have to worry about that complication.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing that, I'll ask if there's a, anybody that'd like to move this forward in the way of a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution 25-1282, our fee schedule.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded for the approval of resolution 25-1282. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Infante.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Claudia Rona.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Elizabeth Arona.
Yes.
Mayor Brown.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you for your time and your report. Appreciate that. Okay, we'll move on to item 8A. Would you read that for us, please?
Discussion and possible action to approve the First Amendment to the agreement with Corolla Engineers, Inc. for additional electrical instrumentation and control scope and reduction in solar system scope services for the wastewater treatment plant water quality project for an additional amount of $102,680 for a total contract amount not to exceed $1,699,680 for the existing term to June 30th, 2026, and authorize the mayor to execute on behalf of the city.
Thank you. Staff report, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, members of the public. My name's Jose Acosta. I'm your utility director here with the City of Solving. First off, I want to thank you, Mr. Brown, for referencing our blue uniforms as Dodger Blue. We're all happy to wear that around here. So thank you for that. I do want to acknowledge that I have invited two representatives from Corolla to be on this meeting as well. They've been on the line since 7:15, Mr. Ali Amadi and Mr. Jeff Weisar. So they are here to assist with any questions that you may have from the council and discuss what the amendment contains. So we signed the agreement with Corolla a while back to start the engineering services for the wastewater treatment plant expansion project. Since then, we've modified and discussed changes to the electrical and instrumentation component of this engineering project. Initially, there was going to be no build-out or reconstruction of existing controls or electrical components to existing infrastructure that would remain at the plant, meaning the digester that's there, the electrical components and instrumentation that's there currently was going to remain in place. Staff did not feel that that was the smart move to do. So we've asked them to modify the engineering to rebuild those components, which would require demolishing of the existing components and rebuild them with new and current components to make sure that those are going to last for the lifetime of the plant as well. Instead of having, adding paint to a car, we wanted to make sure the car was complete with new components as well. One of the other items that we discussed as staff with Corolla was the solar project component of the plant. And based off of the cost savings, which was about $4,000 a year, we didn't feel it was smart to move forward with implementing the solar project at this time. We will build the plant with the ability to expand with solar services and project in the future as needed. One of the other components was that there wasn't a battery backup that was going to be large enough, based off of the study and the engineering, to provide power for the whole plant and the components that will be there. So we decided to put that, bench that portion of the project at this time and build, build the plant with the ability to expand in the future as well. With that being said, we also did want to share tonight that, um, an update of where we are with the process at the wastewater treatment plant. I did come to council back in December of last year to give an update of where we are. And we have moved forward with a few of those endeavors since then. The preliminary engineering report has been submitted to USDA for the loan application. They have reviewed that engineering report and we had quite a bit of communication last week, going back and forth dialogue with them. And it seems that we're very close to moving on to the application process for the loan now. They had a couple of questions. Corolla was very great at communicating with the staff and with them to get that completed. So they have accepted our preliminary engineering report. They're finalizing their review and will be moving forward with the application process for the loan. The other component which was on the agenda was to. The other component which was on the agenda was to, this evening, was to amend a contract and agreement with Meridian as well for the environmental portion of this project. They have completed their portion with the NEPA and SEQA documents with one portion which requires us to have an informal discussion with US Fish and Wildlife. Still, we're still waiting that. But we did submit the NEPA documents to USDA with that comment in there that we're awaiting that part of US Fish and Wildlife discussions. We didn't want to continue pushing this back, so we did ask them to review what was submitted and provide comments. They did acknowledge that they've received the NEPA documents and they're reviewing them right now. So we're moving forward with that as well. We also are working on the source water assessment project, which was part of the upgrades, which when we received our permit, we had the ability to submit to the Regional Water Quality Control Board source water assessment to see if there's any other ways that we can meet the requirements of the salts that they're imposing on us. That assessment has been completed, and what we did do is we took it back and we diagnosed it further and included a groundwater mixing analysis to see if there's any anti-dag issues that we are that we are contributing, contributing to the groundwater at the river. Sorry about that. And so that's going to be included in that report, which will be submitted this week to the Regional Water Quality Control Board as well. That could influence the permit requirements for the salts at the wastewater treatment plant. We'll hear back from them after they review that report as well. The design for engineering, we are at 30%, so we are on track of what Corolo has promised as trying to get us to 100% engineering and design by the end of this year, which will keep us on track of hopefully getting this out to bid mid next, middle of next year, getting awarded by third quarter, fourth quarter of next year, and staying on track of possibly having this completed in 2028, by the end of 2028. Corolo did compile a timeline, which was included in your packet as well, which summarizes all of what I've said of where we are on the timeline and what we have completed. So with that being said, I do have them on the line if we have any further questions for them, or if council has any questions of me, or if Randy would like to add anything further.
Anti-dag is anti-degradation, just to clear up that shortcut.
The term, the nomenclature. Thank you. Any questions? I had a quick question. The electrical implementation and scope here, is this something you're trying to do in advance of the new, or is this an add to the, to the engineering?
This is an add to the engineering, so it's not something in advance.
Okay, we're not, we're not contracting for these services prior to another plant build?
No, that is correct. We're not.
Okay.
This was just something that wasn't included in the original engineering design, and we've added it to the design to ensure that we have all new components.
And in follow-up to that, the salt analysis would then determine any additional engineering that would be required if, if there are, for those groundwater or source water concerns?
The saltwater analysis and the anti-dag analysis is going to hopefully allow the state to modify our contract. If not, the only other option is RO. And that's a substantially higher cost and different process, which we would have to come back to council and discuss how we want to proceed with that. And when I say higher cost, it's probably about four to five times higher in cost than what we're looking at right now. That's why we're performing the source water assessment and then anti-dag analysis to try to convince the Regional Water Quality Control Board that we are not contributing to any issues in the groundwater.
Okay. Thank you.
The regional board has repeatedly said they're not trying to force us into an RO process. So, and then, and part of our discussion, one of our more recent discussions with them is, as Jose pointed out, you know, we're looking at about $80 million to do an RO of a plant large enough to handle 100% of our wastewater. If you do the quick math over a 30-year process, that would add about $100 a month, a month to the sewer bills. So it's not economically feasible for our community to be able to absorb anything approaching that cost. Even if we got a grant to pay for half of it, that's still $50 a month. And that's, you know, so I mean, we're, we're working really diligently. Corolo's helping us with this source water analysis. I believe we've got a pretty good chance at getting the water board to understand that we're not degrading the water, the source, or the groundwater with our, our process. And hopefully, we get some traction with that.
Thank you. Other questions?
Yeah, please.
Are we still planning? Sorry. Well, the plan, as I recall in the past, was to recycle the water, make it non-potable, and use that in a different way. Are we still doing that?
No, but we are building the plant with the option to be able to expand to recycle water in the future if we so decide to go that route. We still would have to find areas to use the water.
Right.
And if we did go that route and we were able to afford it and get places to, fields, crops to use the water, then the salt limits would be out the window. We would have to worry about those.
Thank you, sir.
Do we have any update from Los Olivos CSD? And if we were to find agreement with the CSD, do we need to restart our analysis?
So, great question. That was on my list to provide an update on. I did attend Los Olivos CSD, I want to say Los Osos, because I was at LO CSD before, but Los Olivos Board Meeting last month, and they did discuss their rates with the public, and they did have their first hearing on their publics, on their possible rate studies. So we are still looking at taking on their treatment. They really want it, and I've expressed that the city council has given direction to staff to explore that and make sure we move forward with that. The design of the plant and the recommendation by Corolo, which Corolo also conducted a study for Los Olivos on the ability for City of Solvang to take on their wastewater treatment plant is not to take on that wastewater until after the design of this plant. So his design is in consideration of taking on their waste as well.
That's really my question. Is it, are we accounting for that, or is there room for that, so we don't have to restart any, any of these processes?
No, we are building to be able to take that on.
If there's no other questions, I'll open it to public comments. Anybody here? Anybody on Zoom? Seeing none, we'll bring it back. And any other discussion? I will entertain a motion for this discussion item.
I'll move that we approve the addendum for Corolo Engineering.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the Corolo addition or modification. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Infante.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Claudia Rona.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Elizabeth Arona.
Yes.
Mayor Brown.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you, council, and I'd like to thank Mr. Amadi and Weisar for being on the call. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Jose. I feel like I'm racing the clock here. Do we need a, a motion to go past? 9:30?
Not till we get to 9:30, yeah.
Why don't we get that out of the way and we don't have to rush? Would that be possible?
I don't know. That's a lawyer's say.
If we, if we, if we finish sooner, that's quite all right, too, but I'd like to get that out of the way.
Done in 10 minutes.
I'm skeptical about that.
Do we need a motion for that?
I would.
Yeah.
All right, I'll make a motion that we extend the meeting beyond 9:30 to accommodate the two remaining items.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to extend our meeting time beyond 9:30 to accommodate items 8C and 8D. Roll call, please.
Excuse me, sorry. Councilmember Infante, please.
Yes.
Councilmember Claudia Rona.
Nah.
Council, Councilmember Elizabeth Arona.
Yes.
Mayor, Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Brown.
Yes.
Motion passes 4-1.
The person who comes late, you know, of all things, we extended a courtesy to start a little late, but, okay. We'll move on to 8C. Would you please read that into the record, Madam Clerk?
Discussion and possible action to provide direction to staff regarding Solvang Mesa storm drain modification.
Thank you. Staff report, please.
Sorry. So last year, late last summer, we received some concerning phone calls from members of the Skid Mesa community about baby quail that had fallen through the storm, through the grate into the storm drain. Staff was called out, Fish and Wildlife was called out various times. Apparently, it happened multiple occasions. I committed to the neighbors that were mostly concerned that we would do a review, and I would bring to council kind of an analysis of what the cost might be. So staff had been working on this, getting proposals from our various consultants and engineers. So the quail, like many bird species, can have two to three clutches or hatchings per year. So this is an ongoing thing basically from now through the end of summer. And so the design was modified of the storm grate, storm grate to make it small enough so that these small birds would not fall through. Unfortunately, we also have to take into account the engineering of those storm grate, storm grates, in that they were designed to accept a peak storm flow. And if you reduce the openings, that means less water can get into the storm drain. And often what happens will, that will continue to flow downhill, so people at the bottom of the slope end up with more water than they anticipate. So it's not just a simple matter of covering it up and making it smaller. You could argue to do it just a one grate, but obviously there, I forget the number, if you can help me out, but there's over 100 of these grates in the Skid Mesa community. And then if you consider, there's quails throughout the City of Solvang. So potentially, we would be dealing with it. I just saw a couple in my backyard yesterday, so they're all over the place. So ultimately, staff is coming to council for direction on how do we deal with this? There's a certain sentiment that, you know, all life is precious and you need to do whatever you can to preserve it. There's also a sentiment that there's a reason why quail and other birds have so many hatchlings per year, so that it's part of the circle of life. So we have to be cognizant of that. The cost, before we can really do anything, we would need to do an analysis, an engineering analysis of the storm water and whether or not this would in fact impede enough rainwater to cause other problems. That estimate is about $47,000. Assuming that were approved, then the next question is, how much does it cost to replace the frame and the grate? That's over $200,000 again because of the number, and this is just at Skid Mesa. Those numbers, there's so many of them. And then you also have the opening at the curb, so you would need to find a way to block that off or reduce the size so that the birds couldn't go in through that opening. That's another almost $90,000. Staff time to go out and clean the grate because it would get plugged up with leaves and other debris. It would approximately $25,000. When you add a contingency to that factor, we're talking almost a half a million dollars to protect the community of Skid Mesa's quail. So again, that's not addressing throughout the city. That's just the one neighborhood. I've been told that the neighbors of the couple of grates that were most of concern last summer have taken upon themselves to cover those grates. I'm going to direct public work to remove those covers again for fear of possibly creating stormwater issues, runoff issues. So staff is again looking for some direction. As insensitive as it sounds, staff is recommending that we let nature take its course, but leave it to council to make that final decision.
Thank you. Any communicating comments?
Just a clarification. So looking at the fiscal impact, is this something that the Skid Mesa community would, would pay for?
It certainly could be, if that was the direction of council.
Like this is not something that we're going to, as a city, take on, half, a potential half a million?
Correct.
Dollar, okay. Thank you.
I have a question. In reference to the, the timing of all this, is there the covers that can be put on, is it during the rain season, or is it afterwards? I don't know the, the climate cycles of quail, but are they incompatible to have a cover for midsummer? And, and, because we don't have much rain during the summertime, so I'm just thinking.
Well, again, the concern.
Medium here somewhere.
The concern would be, obviously during the rainy season, animals typically aren't breeding, so we don't have to worry about it during the rainy season. It would be during this time of year, but as we just experienced, we had a decent amount of rain on Saturday. You also have to worry about thunderstorms and monsoon season and those kinds of things where we could get a torrential downpour. Again, could, might, maybe, definitely will. Obviously, we have no way of knowing that. So we could put things out to temporarily block it, but then we'd have to spend the staff time to go pick it up. Or again, the vehicle, the garbage truck goes by, or the street sweeper goes by and lifts it and moves it. So it's going to be a labor, very labor-intensive process, and we've only got a very small crew. I think the higher and better use of the resources is to, on more citywide issues.
Okay. Go ahead if you have a question.
And I'm, I am certainly not trying to be facetious with this, but I'm, I'm wondering if there's, I know there's concern with this situation, but has there been any type of study of how many quail are killed other ways? I mean, you know, that, that we're not just looking at the, the storm drains, like, I mean, do we know by car or by any other means?
No, but if we had a few hundred thousand, we could do a study.
Oh, yeah, we can do stuff.
Quail are not an endangered species. I mean, number one, right? I mean, and like I pointed out, there's a reason why those animals have so many, because they're part of the food chain. And you have the ones that go down the storm drain. Unless you count the insects as part of the food chain, typically aren't benefiting, you know, contributing to that. But it's, you know, I, I was aware of it happening three or four times last year. It may have happened more than that, but I know it happened a few times. And I did make a commitment to this concerned neighbor that we would do the study and bring it to council, and that's what we're doing here tonight.
Randy, did that always happen in the rain? Or was, or are we watering too much?
No, it's during, typically during the dry weather.
Area?
I'm sorry?
Are they, are they watering the landscaping too much in that area? Because I, I can't imagine how much storm overlap there is in the, in the quail, you know, hatching window.
Right. But again, you have to consider that storms can happen anytime. We had a hurricane that almost hit Santa Barbara last year. May-June, I believe, maybe a little later than that, but, and that's typically not a rainy season. So by providing the, the cover to prevent that, we could do it with just the one that everybody's concerned about. But again, you're still talking about labor, you're still talking about potential liability if that does cause something. And I wouldn't recommend doing anything without the $47,000 study, because that would tell us that, you know, these things were, these storm grates were engineered for a peak runoff. And obviously, there's a lot of area up there that is impermeable. You've got roofs and concrete and driveways and streets. And so that runoff in a 100-year event could be quite substantial. And again, the likelihood of it happening during the rainy season, I mean, during the summer season, probably not great, but it's not zero.
Very well.
I'm sorry. I'm, I'm just wondering, I know we have a unique situation with Skid Mesa, but could this potentially open up, like, would we be, if we agreed to this potentially open up, like, would we be, if we agreed to do this, would it be setting a precedent for other communities throughout Solvang that could make the same requests that we don't necessarily have the same kind of relationship with? And, I mean, pardon my ignorance, but I'm just, I'm just thinking there could be a lot of liability on the city.
It definitely sets a precedent and increases the expectation. I mean, it might not be quail, it might be baby bunnies, it might be other wildlife. You know, there's a lot of folks that live in some of the more kind of rural areas of the city that have concerns about the deer that get hit by the cars. And, you know, they may want us to put up protective fencing to keep the deer from crossing the road or create an undercrossing so the frogs, what they do in some communities, can go underneath the road so they don't get run over. So, I mean, it's, where does it stop? And that's, that's also a concern.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Have, well, we should at the very least, you know, forward this to the people that were concerned so that they know, hey, we're looking into it and this is what could be done and how much it's going to cost.
Well, and that's, if I understood your question, that's what this analysis was about, is, you know, half a million dollars roughly to do.
Yeah, but, but what I'm saying is that the people that brought this concern forward, you know.
No, we haven't done anything with them.
Yeah, let's, let's just go ahead and let them be known that the city is looking into it.
Yeah, and, and I did commit to that, and like I said, I have not returned to them with any discussion. But part, was waiting for direction from council is to, do you want us to do some additional investigation? Do you want us to spend the 47,000 and change to do the, you know, the engineer's study and get that analysis to say clearly this will or will not have a deleterious impact on the, you know, the runoff.
Thank you. I want to open it up to public comment now, if there is any. I see none, so I'll close public comment, bring it back to the council for any other discussion. And I think if you're looking for direction, I would assume with, if I may speak for my colleagues, that maybe we will not, we have no solution to the problem at this point in time.
Okay, I will reach out to the concerned resident and let them know that we're not going to do anything at this point. And I'll also instruct public work to remove whatever barriers they have put up so that we don't have any problems. Thank you.
Thank you. Excellent. If we didn't have any dead frogs though, we wouldn't have any jokes. Okay, we're going to move on to item eight D. Madam Clerk, would you read that for us, please?
Discussion and direction to staff regarding modifications to Title 11 zoning ordinance section 1110A, design district overlay and chapter 13 sign ordinance.
Thank you. Staff report, please. And thanks for staying so late, and I know you have a long drive ahead of you, so.
Oh, it's all right.
He was hoping you voted that extension down so he could go home.
Then he'd just have to come back. We don't pay him overtime.
I just gotta, gotta make sure the kids go to sleep on time because of nights like that, so. With that being said, so this is a discussion and direction item before you this evening. No code changes will occur, but direction to city staff will. So again, we'll discuss, discussion and direction regarding modifications, signed ordinance and design district overlays. So we have had this discussion on a couple of occasions here, first being November 12th, we had a discussion on signs. The direction given to city staff was to complete a workshop. On November 25th, 2024, as part of our zoning ordinance adoption, one particular item was asked to also go back and solicit feedback and do a workshop. So exactly what we did. We held joint planning commission meeting, DRC workshop on March 13th, discussed the items specifically objective design standards with R3 lots and the design district overlay, a design handbook to guide applicants with approved color palettes, et cetera, use of A-frame signs and temporary signage, particularly in the village, and then elimination of content-based regulations. So those were the main topics that we discussed, and again, we'll go over what the outcomes were of that workshop. So the first one is direction for the Design District One, that's what DD stands for, amendments. So as a part of your zoning ordinance update amendment that took effect in January, we did adopt a village, village design district, objective design standards, and of that particularly R3 properties were within the district that allow for residential uses. So as stated in the staff report and over many a times, it's important to have objective standards to control the aesthetic and specifically to ensure that the aesthetic of these R3 lots were of the old world Danish design. So the feedback we did receive from various decision makers as well as council members and residents was to ensure that we have control of new structures. And the biggest issue was, well, what if someone decides to go ahead and purchase the property, demo building, and then what? So again, the jux was maintaining the ability to have control over the new buildings while at the same time sort of adhering to this idea of what's called adaptive reuse. So adaptive reuse is basically taking our existing buildings, not demoing them, but actually reusing them and repurposing them for uses that fit in today or future economic conditions. So what we did come up with was a sort of very poignant change that would occur to the objective design standards as new structures or places, structures are allowed up to 49% of new gross floor space dedicated to residential uses. So what that does is that would allow for sort of an ability for the DRC to review and us to be a little bit more subjective in the, in the design of buildings rather than objective. And at the same token, still championing this idea of adaptive reuse. And so you're beginning to see that now, or at least we as the planning department beginning to see that now with more and more applications converting some of the unused office spaces into residential uses. Those are essentially adaptive reuse. So that was sort of the consensus that was given. City staff is recommending we, you know, you direct us to make that change so we would come back at a later date, we'd come back to the planning commission and then ultimately the city council for adoption for that. The second one is direction on design handbook. So what city staff is recommending and what we heard back from the feedback from the workshop was moving forward with repealing our design guidelines. For those that do not know, our design guidelines were adopted back in 1989. While they're really good design guidelines, they're actually pretty strong, a lot of our objective design standards are based on those guidelines. We do have the objective standards that are now greenlit, so we want to place it with a design handbook, very similar to our design guidelines. It will help assist applicants and decision makers to interpret the codes, so it'll have a little bit more graphics heavy. It would include a color palette, so this is something that we would work heavily with the DRC to finally adopt a color palette. So again, the idea is to work with the DRC and the planning commission and then bring back the final product to council for adoption of a design handbook.
Are these books, handbooks, whatever you call them, handbooks, just given out to anybody that wants to be curious about putting in a permit?
Uh, yeah, actually, that's what they are.
Stack of them on your counter?
Would be available on our website and probably one hard copy on the counter. And again, the whole point is to help interpret the designs, to be very much more graphical. The reality is it's really to help more the property owners or those who aren't familiar with the planning process. Most design professionals actually kind of get where we're going, and they're very, they're actually very happy about where we've gone, some because it made, it's easier to interpret, it's very objective, and so again, it's adding graphics to it. And it's really more for the property owners to better understand what we're looking for more so than anything else, as well as the public.
Thank you.
So, so again, that was met at the design workshop to move forward with that, and that's a work effort that again, we want to have greenlit by you, the council, with additional, any additional feedback. And we're actually looking to get started this May, on May 15th, with talking about colors, so that'll be a very robust DRC meeting, which is great, it's fantastic, I like them. So the next set is dealing with signage. A-frame signs is always a hot topic. Staff presented various options for A-frame signage. The three options were outright ban, which is the existing status quo. The other one is to allow for A-frame signs at the right of way, that was met at the workshop with the resounding thud. But what was actually met with a little bit more enthusiasm was allow only on private property. So the way this would work is we would craft regulations, again, with the DRC to amend the sign ordinance for what's called a time-place manner. So essentially, the place obviously is not in our right of way, but it is on private property. The manner to which it's displayed in terms of it needs to come up when you're in business, needs to be brought back in when you're at, when you're closed for the day, et cetera, time of, you know, time, et cetera. And then how it also looks, that's the other big key differences, is we don't want A-frame signs that are of plastic or sort of look a little tiki-tacky. We want them to be a little bit more of a higher design quality, and we're hopefully able to craft those sort of regulations with the DRC in mind and then take it to planning commission. Again, rolling, rolling these out in sections and pieces with the, with the DRC that are a little bit more digestible, come in and check in with the city council, and we sort of get almost the final product and then finally take this over to adoption. So again, that, that's the direction we received from the workshop. We just want to make sure that is the direction that council is giving as well. Temporary signage, it comes in all sorts of flavors, but really just focusing more on the temp signage that is larger than what is currently allowed, continue to ban things such as feather flags, et cetera, or the dancing inflatable guys, I don't really like those either. But looking at our temp signage, which is really small, and so again, recognizing that allow for temp signage to last a little bit longer, recognizing that we should be able to place temporary signages, particularly for businesses that are under construction, to allow people to understand what's going on or be excited for what's going in. And then basically, the direction we received was to amend sign ordinance to refine the temporary signage language, again, work with the DRC and finally provide a clear path forward to your approval. So actually, one of your items this evening was the fee study. One of those newer fees was, it's actually a fee that's not cost recovery with signs, it's, it's done for a very good reason, because we want good signage, we want you, businesses to invest in that signage. We can take a little bit of that hit as long as you meet these objective standards to make good signage, so we can help you by reducing that cost. So that, again, there's a little bit of given, given play on that presentation earlier, but that's one of the reasons these temp signs would help go about that. The other one was direction for content-based regulations. So again, as, as we've, if you've seen us speak at the DRC or planning commission, there is a clear need to eliminate content-based regulation, i.e. that's read the sign to determine what it is. So again, time-place manner, I am like a robot when it comes to that, but that's really what sign ordinances are all about. Attendees did agree that the sign ordinance needs to come into conformance with our federal case law. And so the direction of city staff was to amend the sign ordinance with, again, assistance from the DRC to remove content-based regulations. So again, that comes back to where a sign gets placed, for how long it gets placed, potentially what color, but again, that's something that we'll work with the DRC with.
Your prior slide, talking about temporary signs?
Yeah.
Doesn't have time, place, or manner?
Well, it, it would, it'd be the same.
It would, well, okay, sure.
Very much. It's all got to be based on time.
I just wondered where it was going to go, you know, you don't want it out on the sidewalk again.
No, we don't. And again, temporary signs, what is a temporary sign? I've seen businesses that had a temporary sign that was about three years old. I don't think that was quite temporary.
No.
So, and most ones are pretty easy when it comes to temporary signs, you know, 30 days up, then must come down, or six days up, and then you can't put another one for another 45 days. So again, these are things that will work with the DRC, will come in and check in with the city council to make sure that's the direction we want to go. But again, the biggest one is to remove sort of that content base. And what do I mean by content base is a great example is neon signs. Neon signs technically aren't allowed in, in a window, but they are allowed if you're a hotel, go figure, that's content based. So it's, it's, you know, they're, we would essentially clean that up as it goes along, again, to conform with our federal regulatory laws. So the last sign is, is something that council had requested item for, to discuss, but we just melded it right back in here, because we're already talking about signs. So it's a request lack of signage. So our, our current sign code is silent on the requirement for businesses to have signage, except address. That's the only one that you'll ever get a requirement, and it's actually from the fire code. There's a specific mandated height for commercial businesses, and there's a specific mandated height for residential in terms of the, the addresses. So there's a reason why codes are typically silent on this, because typically businesses place signs to identify and locate. It makes sense. It works for about 98% of the time. However, there is one area where it doesn't quite work, and that is when businesses don't actually want to identify themselves. Case in point, I was visiting Colorado last summer, my wife and I, we're foodies, we like, you know, visiting restaurants, and I found a nice Michelin star restaurant to go to. I for the life of me drove around three times looking for this place. There were no signs to be had except for the one little sign on the door that had its business name. That's it, no more, no less. And it was the smallest thing known to man. I asked the manager, hey, what's up with signs? And we don't do that. We go by reviews, our reviews only. Oh, cool? Very similar to a speakeasy, same thing, just got to know, you got to know where to go. There's a speakeasy in South Lake Tahoe, I can tell you where it's at, but there will be no signs for it. It, it's a really cool experience, by the way. So again, it, it's, it's really, you know, some businesses make it a point to not have the signs, whether it's restaurants, pop-ups, speakeasy, you name it, if it's a part of their business plan to not be identified, they don't want to be identified. So again, signs are typically a business decision. A requirement for signage creates sort of this additional enforcement requirement. So essentially, we got to go out, we got to have Jennifer or any other city staff go out, and Jennifer's our code compliance officer, by the way, and go out and make sure you're doing what you're doing. That, that takes away from their duties that they're already working on, whether it's a code case, whether it's, it's fire hazards, et cetera. And so that essentially, and also finally, it may create an undue burden on our business owners. Because again, if they don't want to provide a sign because it's a pop-up or it's a part of their business, but now we're going to go mandate them to require to go get a sign, that, that's an additional expense that they didn't really think. And they have to go through our process on top of that, which of course, we're trying to change our process, but right now, it's not the best process. So again, city staff is recommending these signage decisions remain up to the business owners. Because again, who best to know what they need, what their businesses' needs are, is the business owner themselves versus a government mandate? So I'm off my soapbox there, and I'll open up to any questions that the council may have for the direction given city staff.
Any questions, boy?
I mean, a few questions, but I think they would be best addressed, you know, with the other bodies that are putting in. Some input, I did see one that addresses benches and how they're, you know, what they can say on them, and I can think of a few exceptions. My guess is that the handbook is going to be somewhat flexible if somebody proposes something that falls a little outside of the guidelines, but, you know, the DRC likes it or it's a good idea, there can be some flexibility there.
Yeah, so the sign ordinance would, our sign ordinance kind of already does, it builds in that ability to, if you don't conform with standards, you can ask for an exception. That would remain. But again, it's, it's, we want to be exceptions to be abnormal, not normal. So the exception needs to be a really good reason and meet the findings, that's the biggest key, is when you, when any body makes an exception, they have to make the findings. And if, if that body, that's making, the decision-making body, the review authority makes those findings, then so be it. But that would be built in into this, any sign ordinance, and it's already built into our objective standards.
Okay, thank you.
I'd be in agreement.
I have a bunch of questions.
Well, I might cover some of them, unless you want to go first. Regarding, having requiring signs, I'd agree with that. First of all, we have a monopoly on requiring you to go through our process if you want a sign. So to force somebody into our process by virtue of insisting on a sign is probably not a little bit too, total talent, you know, a bit much. With regards to temporary signs though, I was wondering, I'm going to use the, the mission as an example, because they have a sign for a lot of nonprofits that will use that for a new event, or whether it be the Elks, or the youth rec department, or some other fundraiser at San Lorenzo, or where have you. Would they, would that be an exception every time, or would that be a CUP? Or how would they, how would we, would we be able to accommodate that? And if so, how would we do it?
You know, when we had our zoning ordinance changes, there was a battle about whether or not the church should be deemed public, public institution. or not the church should be deemed public, public institution. There's a rhyme and reason for everything I do, or at least try to. In this instance, it's kind of looking forward ahead to stuff like this. So when a property is owned public, it's usually for a very good reason, usually to us as a city or school. So there are ways in any code, you can utilize time, place, manner, and place would be a zone and property to exempt certain sign regulations and/or build in, hey, you can have a temporary sign for X amount of days as long as it's, you know, X, you know, 40 square feet. You leave it at that. So that's the true reason, part of the reason why it was kind of brought into the public fold is to, again, provide a little bit more leeway to these more public functioning properties so that in the future, they can go through a less rigorous or be exempt from certain things because of the nature of their business. So that's exactly how we would do it.
There's a path.
There will be very much a path versus what's in it today, which is no path.
For folks like that, okay. And then with you, going back to your first item, the residential use of 49% for residential for the R3 zone, as one of your first slides.
No, it's so you're, that would be for new structures in, essentially, new structures in the village would be limited to 49%. So new structures that are zoned VMU would be limited to that percentage.
Raphael, what was the, you had a public workshop. That was kind of the sequence of events. We looked at this several weeks ago. We committed to doing a public, there was some controversy over a few things in the, in the changes in the ordinance being re-proposed, and we committed to doing a workshop. What, and I know you did it, right? So what in, what results came out of the workshop that drove any changes in what we're looking at today?
So the biggest one is, is going to be the first slide right off the bat. Because again, the biggest controversy was the objective design standards and understanding that those are minimum standards and that understanding that it's mixed-use projects and why, you know, there was the issue of, well, should we keep the R3 lots in or take them out? And then, you know, there was just a lot of moving pieces during those two meetings. And this is a complicated subject. So the workshop really dove in into why those lots were zoned to R3, what is the good positives for it in terms of having the objective standard that's there, having them similar to the way buildings are supposed to look on that block and against that block. And then ultimately, in having that local control that a lot of folks were feeling like they were losing. So out of that, city staff recommended this 49% cap for new structures. So at that workshop, that was not even introduced at the city council, that wasn't even talked about, that that was sort of thought about, that city staff, you know, came up with at that workshop. So that's
So that's one change.
That is one change.
Where is that in the, in the documentation?
That's actually on page 333. It's the summary of it.
Page 333?
Yeah.
Okay, at the workshop, yeah. I have actually highlighted it. The doc he struggled with, what did change? Because nothing in here is redlined, so we have to hunt for that.
Well, we haven't changed anything yet. That's the
Okay, so what is, then I'm asking, I'll re-ask the question differently. What were the specific outcomes from the workshop?
So the specific outcomes from the workshop was what I just detailed in each individual slide.
So nothing about the other controversial subjects that were like building height, 500 square foot, design, the design guidebook that still we don't have visibility to?
Correct. It's to get started on the work for the handbook. That's why I'm here this evening is to say, hey, that's what you want me and my staff to spend time on. Go get started. As far as the heights go, I mean, we went through this meeting, the biggest substantial change to the heights were twofold, and this is getting away from it, but I'm just going to explain it, is, one, we changed the way heights are measured throughout the city to do average natural grade, which basically, well, it's not basically, it implements your general plan by preserving your hillsides. I think that went over most people's heads.
No, no, no. Well, okay, then we should explain it again. We don't have to decide on this. We're giving you direction today.
Yeah, correct.
But, but some of the changes, I just looking, I've struggled with this because I don't see the results of the workshop from when we looked at this several weeks ago to what we're looking at today.
And again, it's because, well, we're basically doing an overview of the workshop. And the workshop, you know, it's, again, there are no redline changes because we haven't done the redline changes.
So that was not made clear because we didn't get your slides till just now. And we were then given the whole document again?
Yeah, you're basically given everything that's adopted just to go through and give direction to say, okay, we heard you at the workshop, go do that. But hey, while you're at it, change this. And again, the intention is to make the changes and then bring those to our DRC and bring them to Planning Commission and then, again, bring a check-in to you with the actual redlines.
So what is the, because I just want to make sure my peers understand what you, how you've served this up to us, because you're asking us to give you direction, but we still don't know what's changed or what's not changed.
So again, typically, what I've done professionally is we would ask our council the direction. Is this the direction you want city staff to expend their time to go do? And if yes, then go do that. If no, then we leave everything as is and we pivot to something else. That is the point of this check-in is to, is to ask you of the council, is this what you want your state, your planning department to be working on?
And if this is not, what would you like us to work on?
We're really, I don't get that question. We asked you to look at this several weeks ago and to conduct the workshop. So you're asking then, do you want us to go work on the things that came out of the workshop? Or should we go back and revisit some of the things that didn't result in the workshop, but we still think are concerns?
I mean, if there's something that is a concern to you right now, I'll be happy to hear it and we'll splash it in as a part of this work effort.
Yeah, okay. I'm frustrated because this is complicated and we pulled this section out from the larger exercise because we thought this was really important and needed more time and attention. But basically, the way it's coming back to us, it doesn't look like anything has changed or anything has progressed, unless we look at your PowerPoint, which we didn't get a chance to look at in advance.
Basically, the PowerPoint summarizes what senior staff report.
Okay, but it doesn't, but you've given us 40 pages and no redlines to tell me what's changed.
Because we haven't made the change yet.
Then, so, okay.
And but here's the argument.
You gave it back to me in the document, but I'm telling you, we've only seen the PowerPoint this, at 10 o'clock at night.
Right. And the PowerPoint is a summary of the staff report. Look, this is what I've heard from our community. I can sit here and do all the redlines after the workshop and we were doing this at 10 and you'll get a community doc, pride that they never got to see it. It's to check in and do these changes at bytes, essentially going to the DR, say, be able to say to the DRC, DRC, look, the city council has basically given us direction, city staff, to bring this before you to start making these changes. Here are the proposed changes, DRC, based on the council direction. Please provide input and then we do the next section and then we do the next section. Does that make any sense?
I, I'm actually thinking back when there was a huge room of people in the audience that were distressed over how we were originally proposing it. And it was in this format and it's come back in this format. I can pick out what I think is still controversial because it hasn't changed. My concern is that I don't think as a collective, we all understand that. So I can make those points right now, but I'm deeply concerned that at 10 o'clock at night, my peers won't really get the impact of the things that haven't changed. Okay? So it's, I'll give it to you. It's the 500 feet square foot exemption. So there's no process, there's no review of any change if there's a requested change that's 500 feet.
There is a review. It's against the objective standards that were adopted and city staff does the review.
And city staff does a review.
That's correct.
Yeah, but no DRC and no PC, correct?
Correct.
So city staff is obligated to enforce what we still don't know, right, is enforcing because we don't have a design guidebook.
No, we have the objective design standards. The objective design standards are there.
Which are very low, simply defined standards, right?
So again, if someone comes in with a proposed facade addition under 500 square feet and their window doesn't meet the size of the standards, then we don't approve it.
And I can give you an example of something that I think went through the whole review, but we still get emails about staff approving certain paint colors. So the question is, or certain paint end points and start points. So the question is, is staff really empowered right now to enforce what's still in motion?
The only thing that's in motion would be the design book to just give you more graphics of how to interpret
And a color palette.
And a color palette that currently doesn't exist, but we'd have to work on that.
Yes, which is kind of controversial right now.
It is extremely controversial. I wholeheartedly agree.
Okay, so I'll put it back to my peers. Do we agree that a facade or a facility change of any kind in the two design areas should just go to staff and no one else if it's less than 500 square feet?
Or if it is conforming to the standards that are set in the handbook. I think that makes more sense rather than just an arbitrary square footage of the project.
Yeah.
Are you familiar with the handbook?
Well, we have to make the handbook.
Exactly. So we're still making a critical line in the sand about what's judgment by staff or our other two bodies, but we don't know what the judgment is based on.
Well, because it's still a work in progress, right?
Exactly.
Well, I'm thinking that we're trying to give them direction as to what to work on, not, so
I want to call those out.
This is where we're headed with it. But I'm, from the points that you brought up, I would just say that indeed, the A-frames, I would, you know, for me, it would be private property exclusively. And then with certain same standards that we have for other signs. With regards to tempered, temp signage, we discussed that. And those would be the initial items of the bullet points that you brought up. That would be my direction for those. I don't see the rest of this as being, you're not requesting, if you didn't bring it up, you either don't want or have a mind or something in mind for direction. But I also think that we need to finish that palette book or the colors and whatnot for discussion.
Maximum height is still an issue, in my, in my opinion, because we have changed it from 35 feet to 40 feet. And the graphics specifically
It's still 35 feet.
Doesn't call out that we added five feet to the maximum height.
But it's, well, but that is in the general plan. Like it establishes, 35 feet doesn't necessarily mean the top of the building. There's
It establishes the uninhabitable portion. So the habitable portion can go to 35 feet, correct?
No, I believe that can go over 35 feet.
No. No.
It establishes where you measure from.
That is correct.
So, I mean, if, again, natural grade, right? If you're standing at the bottom of the hill, at the bottom of the slope and you're going up, it might be more than 35 feet there because the average slope, natural slope, it's only 35 feet, but it will appear and will actually be more than 35 potentially on a slope.
It can go to 40.
But on flat ground, it won't.
It doesn't matter where you stay. Wherever your starting point is, it still can go to 40. But your graphic does not say that. Your graphic stops the measurement at 35 feet, but adds five more feet to it.
For the roof line and articulation of the roofs, consistent with the objective design standards.
Consistent with, okay, so we're back to objective design standards.
Which are already adopted and codified and they're, they're in there.
We did say, you're saying we did say 40 feet? Because I don't remember anything saying 40 feet.
So again, 35 feet to the top and then it, the language is in there. It says that the undulations of the roofs can go beyond that. But again, that's the undulations of the roofs and that's what you're, from a structural standpoint, you know, you're going to get the pitches and everything that, what we see today. So again, this is, becomes an issue of density and other things. And, you know, there's a lot of variables that go into it in terms of, and we can always, and we can always adjust it. That's
Raphael, where did we end on the, because just remind me where we ended on the Fifth Street project. It's, what was that building height?
Fifth Street project, to be honest, I don't know enough about it because it came after I started. So to be honest, it's, if it's under our old code, the measurement is from finished floor, which is, which is why you have a taller building than what it is today. Because the finished floor is based on the padded grading and everything else from its sun. That's our old code. Our new code's much more articulate of where you end the measurements.
Where you start the measurements.
And where you end it as well.
Therefore, where you end it.
Yeah.
Let me interject here just for a second. I'd like to move to public comment, if there is any. And Mr. Beebe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dennis Beebe Sauvage. As long as future changes get a good review from both the DRC and Planning Commission, I'm more comfortable than anything else. You know, it's awfully hard, I think, for a council to start deciding what the answer is without seeing the proposal. So I recommend that, that the DRC and the Planning Commission be given an opportunity
They have the expertise.
To see what is proposed by the planning department.
Is the process and the plan to take this back to both bodies?
Oh, yes. Again, the plan is, is that we bring it back in chunks because that is what the DRC and the Planning Commission expressed. So the game plan is to take chunks, actually craft the language so it's actually proposed, you actually see a red line of it. And that way, the DRC could properly, in public hearing, go over
I'm sorry to interrupt you. I want to finish public comment before we go into much discussion. Is there any other public comment on Zoom or otherwise? Very well, I'll close public comment for now. I'm sorry. Now you may go back, Mr. Raphael. Sorry.
That's fine. So yeah, the intention is to bring this back in chunks, but once the chunks are done, again, have a check-in, very similar to this, but you actually get the red lines this time and you're able to make comments about it. And again, it's my suspicion that we haven't done many of these code changes. So this, you know, check in to see direction, check in to see if we're going correct. This is kind of a new process for this council. But it's very much a tried and true way of how we do code changes in various other jurisdictions.
I think maybe other jurisdictions don't have the DRC, the level of import that the DRC has. But, so I'm more comfortable knowing that the process will be to get their partnership on this.
Pretty much. I mean, especially the signs, that's a huge one. That it needs to be involved with the DRC. We will put out in social media that there will be items in regards to that, the colors. I mean, again, that's, trust me, I can already guess, two to three meetings to just go over color shades. And that's okay, no problem. But it's, it is a very much a public process to culminate into an actual work item. And that takes time.
Mr. Murphy?
I also wanted to remind council that we are still remembering what happened with the code update, and we will, staff have been directed to make sure that you're aware of the potential changes. Ideally, when it goes to the Planning Commission at least, for their review, because then it will come to council shortly after that. We would update any changes that the Planning Commission recommends, but we will be much more communicative about the recommended changes going forward.
Can we also get a copy of the PowerPoint after?
Sure, but again, the PowerPoint summarizes what the staff report's about, so happy to give it.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Do you feel that you have an adequate?
I do.
Direction?
And it is a large work effort. That's the reality, along with our vacation rentals and other things. But it's needed, and that's ultimately the end, is making sure that we have a sign ordinance that works not only for us as a city, but our business owners and us, you know, from the city staff, from a enforcement standpoint.
Well, I think you have got some good direction. What we haven't articulated is your timing on it, so I'd leave that to your department to put through at their, at their best effort. Mr. Murphy, do you have another question?
I was just going to point out, it is a large effort. That's why we come to council to get the direction. We're sharing the takeaways that we took from the joint workshop, and Rafael and I have been talking about this. So we want to make sure we're not going down a path that the council is like, what are you doing? And that's a waste of everybody's time. So we have these check-ins along the way, and I'm sure there'll be others on other subjects. But we are dedicated to making this happen so that at the end of the day, everybody's, well, not everybody will be happy because it's impossible to do that, but we'll make as most people, many people, happy as possible.
Very good. Well, as you know, our brand and our architecture are paramount to our success and legacy. So keep those in mind always. If there's nothing else, I would like to adjourn. And I want to thank staff. I want to thank everybody that's put in all these long hours, even tonight, with everything that you've put up with. And thank you very much for, tonight, we are adjourned at 10:15 PM, and I thank everyone.